Thank you all once again. Thank you all for coming out. It is three o'clock and let the record show that Councilmember, thank you ma'am, Adams, he's in, out the country and I don't think he will be here. And all other councilmembers are... And Councilmember Boyd is here.
Yes.
I saw him. Okay. Well, we do have all councilmember here except Councilmember Adams. Correct, Francisco? He didn't call, zoom in? Okay, thank you sir. So we're gonna call the meeting to order. We will have the invocation by Mr. Pastor Reverend Ken Wooton and the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Cobb. Please stand.
But let me just open it up in prayer if you don't mind and thank you for being here. Let's bow our heads please. Lord Jesus, we thank you for Mayor Debbie Nash King and our city councilmembers, Joseph Solomon. We thank you that he serves District Two and Nina Cobb serves District Three. And Father Michael Boyd also, we thank you for him serving District Four. And Rick Osos Adams, we thank you for his willingness to be a councilmember and the way he is serving and for Jessica Gonzalez, the Mayor Pro-Tim Team and District Number One. And Jose, wow, Lord, I appreciate you. He comes to our press summits on post working with the chaplains and Ramon Alvarez, the council at large. Father, this is a good day that we're having to begin this year and we ask that you give wisdom. We ask that you give guidance. We ask that you give protection as the city councilmembers guide our city. But Lord, as you guide our city, we pray that you would give them encouragement that they need. Lord, courage is something that's very difficult in our society. They need the strength that they need for you to give them the discernment in making decisions even though some of us may not like their decisions sometimes. So for those of us, even I confess, Lord, sometimes I wonder about their decisions. We know now that even better, we can find your grace to be sufficient to support their decisions. So Lord, help us as a city to be team members, though we may not agree all the time with decisions, but we want to be a team member for your glory and for your honor. And finally, Lord, please, out of your mercy and grace, protect them and their family members. In your name, Lord God, we ask this for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Can I just add one more word, a couple of words?
In prayer?
No, just to make an announcement.
Sir, that's not on our agenda. I apologize. We have to follow the meeting act. Thank you. Please, please take your seat. Thank you Chaplain Reverend Wooton and Councilmember Cobb. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, Councilmember Solomon? Mayor Pro-Tim Gonzalez.
My second.
Thank you. All in favor? Yes, all opposed? No. And Council, I apologize for putting up my system. Francisco, could you pull it up? I just brought up my system and it's not online, please. Thank you. A motion carries six to zero with Councilmember Adams being absent. Presentations. Council, you have three minutes to speak, three times each. Madam Secretary.
PR 25003, recognition of the firefighters deployed to assist with the California wildfires.
Thank you for that, Madam Secretary. It is indeed an honor and pleasure to stand before you. You know, I say it so often, many are called but few are chosen. And the individuals that we will recognize today are what we call the chosen ones. It's one thing to sit on the sideline and watch things happen, but it's another thing when you become part of the action to stop things from happening. And the four individuals that we will recognize today, three individuals from the city of Colleen and one from Morgan Point. And Morgan Point, we thank you for allowing your female firefighter to go with us and also utilizing your vehicle to go to California. Would y'all please stand? Y'all stand up for them and give them a round of applause. Please come on up here. There was a crisis that happened in California. They didn't wait for them to call them, they raised their hand and said, "Here I am. I will go." And we're gonna recognize them for their bravery and I would love for the whole council to come stand behind them, with them, come on down, because we're grateful for everything they do. And I know I won't be able to talk about the state of the city during this time, but this is recognition, so I'm not on the agenda. Can I slide? Oh, you gave me that look. Well, I can't talk about the state of city, but I can say this, I think the budget is somewhere on there, that this is the reason that we give over 60% of our budget to our first responders, because they are simply the best. And we're going to recognize them and I'm going to call their chiefs up and they're gonna say all the great and amazing things that these individuals have contribute to saving lives and putting in preventive measures when they went to California to fight the fire. Chief Lopez, I mean Chief Kobinski, and y'all can go either way y'all wanna go, sir.
Thank you Mayor. I'm gonna invite Battalion Chief Shane Sibley just come to join me as we present these certificates. In the long and short, and I will keep it short, we have a long agenda today, these men and women standing behind us today, and I know Chief Sibley will agree with me, they don't do their job for the recognition, they don't do it for the certificates, they do it because they love their job and it is truly a calling, not just a job. To take 14 days of a deployment and two days each way to drive their fire engine that went 62 miles an hour, it would remind a lot of you here of what an army convoy was like. Everybody else is passing you up as you're driving down the road. And one of the stories they shared with us was the fact that people waved and they really were thankful for their service before they even got to their deployment. That speaks volumes and credit to these men and women, but I can promise you that not just these four, but every man and woman on the Colleen Fire Department and the Morgans Point Fire Department would have done the same thing and taken on that same challenge. They just happened to be the ones that were chosen, so for that, we are very thankful. Chief Sibley, would you like to share a few words?
No, I just, I can't say thank you enough for Colleen supporting us as we're able to support y'all and our mutual work that we've been able to do, this relationship that we've built. Like I said, we're here to support y'all just like y'all have been here to support us, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you Chief. The city of Colleen proudly recognized for individuals they are presenting to you for your invaluable assistance and dedication in providing aids to state of California during the recent devastating fire wildfires. Your bravery, dedication, sacrifice and commitment to service going above and beyond your normal call of duty are appreciated. Thank you for your tireless efforts that have not gone unnoticed. Debbie Nash King, Mayor Colleen. Thank you all. We always get comments.
So a lot of times, the deploying is the easy part, the hard part is getting there. And I would like to personally thank the fire administrative staff, including Chief Kobinski, the city council, specifically councilmembers Cobb and Cigara and Mayor Debbie Nash King for giving us this opportunity to deploy, to get additional experience outside of our state, working with other states and specifically California, but from all over the nation, to get more experience and bring it back home in Colleen. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. Once again, we are truly honored for our men and women that go beyond to serve not only our community, our police and fire department, but also serve in other capacities throughout other states. So we are truly, truly grateful for that. Madam Secretary.
PR 25004, Colleen Economic Development Corporation update.
Janelle, that mic is on right there. Okay, thank you. Hey sir, how are you? Yes, sir.
There you go. Good afternoon, Council Mayor. I'm Scott Connell, I'm President of the Colleen Economic Development Corporation. It is a pleasure to be here today to give you a quarterly update on some things that we're doing and hopefully we get you updated on some projects that are happening in the community. I don't know whether there's slides or not. There is. There you go. Okay. Great. I appreciate that, because I need that, I need help in technology. Anybody who works with me knows that. So thank you for that. For those who are not familiar, Colleen Economic Development Corporation is a corporate entity that's the city established in the early 90s to run, to operate an economic development program to attract industry and jobs in the market. We, as staff, operate this on half a contract and we give a quarterly report just to kind of give an update on our activities, but also some of the projects that are happening in the market. First thing I wanna do is always about new people, you know, so I wanna introduce Tyler Robert. He is our new Vice President of Economic Development. He brings eight years of experience in the business out of the, particularly recently out of the Texas Gulf Coast region, so we're really pleased to have him and his background in real estate and marketing and international trade. So he started just a month ago, hit the ground running, we've already submitted lots of reports, and so we're excited about him helping us out and being a part of the team. Next. There you go. Somebody's driving. Okay. Last quarter, at the end of the calendar year last year, we, KEDC entered into a lease agreement with Triple Impact Connections. As you know, we, as part of the EDC, we own a number of different real estate pieces in the Colleen Industrial Park, Business Park. One of them is what has historically been referred to as Blackboard Building or it's 4501 Roy J. Smith. Blackboard Company was the firm that was in there previously and now we're getting new companies, so we may name it something else soon, but the address is that. They took, it's a 55, 50,000 square foot building that's a call center operation. They took about 13, a little over 13 and a half thousand square feet as part of that. If you're not familiar, it is outfitted fully as a call center, desks, tables, chairs, ready to go, plug and play concept. We, as part of their lease, we've done a few facility renovations to get it ready for them. They're on what essentially is the west side of the building, utilizing some of the equipment in there. It is a call center operation, so it can fit with what they, their needs are. Currently have 42 employees, we see that growing and that's one of the part of the benefit of being in that building for them, is it gives them the space to know that they can add incrementally some staff there. They, one of the unique things about this business is that they focus on hiring military spouses and veterans as part of their business and it's just a core part of their business. We're excited about them joining us. They were in a ramp up phase over the fall, we completed all that and we'll have their, under contract for about a five-year term, so we're excited about having that space. If you knew where that building, when it vacated, was vacant for a few years, so we're excited to be able to have it fully, really activated. Next, please. I wanna go through just a couple of project updates, some things that have been going on. It's always important to follow up with, once you have an announcement, you know where, how the process is going on some of these projects. Next slide, please. I'll go through a few of them. As you know, USAMM is under construction in, at the corner of Twin Creeks and Ricky Carlisle Drive. They will be moving from one location in the Colleen Business Park to another, excited for their new space, well under construction. We see that they'll be finishing out sometime this summer and we're already planning a grand opening ceremony for them in September as their schedule kinda works. No date, a particular date yet, but we're excited that this is moving at a real fast pace. You can see that picture, it's a neat complex and we're excited to have them at a very high-profile location. MGC Pure Chemicals, if you remember, they've been in the market for a number of years. Beginning of last year, we entered into an agreement to get them moving forward on one of the largest investments in the city's history, close to $150 million. Their construction continues, they are a supplier to the Samsung operations in Austin, both their current operations and what will be their expansion plans in Taylor. So we do see them, their project is taking a little bit longer to construct, so we, it was gonna be early summer, looks like it's gonna be late summer for them to complete, but it's moving very rapidly and underway. And they're in their thick of their construction period right now and as the spring comes along, they'll actually see some less people operating there as they kinda finish some things up. Workspace USA, we, if you remember, the KEDC sold a five-acre parcel right behind Bell County Glass, in a partnership with Bell County Glass and Workspace USA. They're a small developer out of the Georgetown area that takes small parcels, and this is a five-acre parcel, and creates kind of a business park within a business park. I say that in that they'll build some roads in there and a number of buildings. One of the challenges that small companies have is their ability to have equity in their buildings. They typically, because of the small space, when you talk two to 10,000 square foot buildings or spaces, you're usually in a lease scenario. Well, this would allow them to actually own a building, have some equity and have their own space that they can control. So we're excited about their kickoff, the groundbreaking's gonna be next week, on the 26th. They started to maneuver, get some things settled, moving on that. Look forward to having y'all there. It is a great opportunity to bring a different style of real estate to our market that we haven't seen. And y'all have heard this story before, we're a little bit like the clothing store, you gotta have all the sizes. You gotta have some small sizes and you gotta have big buildings, small buildings. So this is gonna hit a market that we're excited for to grow. Next slide, please. Thanks. Real estate, some of what we, as you know, we acquired the Wolf Technology, what we're calling Wolf Technology Park site, it's a 95-acre site at the southeast corner of Stagecoach and Texas Highway 195. We've been actively working on infrastructure design and cost structures. We'll be moving forward with some of that in the spring, so stay tuned as that process. We've been actively marketing to clients. Some of what I, so you can well imagine when you're laying out properties, where do you wanna move the road one way or the other, depends on how people are gonna use it. So we are actively pushing this out, it's got great infrastructure and we see some clients that have already seen some interest in it. So stay tuned and we, hopefully we'll have some projects as we, as we see some infrastructure going forward. Next slide. And I'll go through a few marketing things that I think are, I think are exciting for us and will help us as a tool. Next slide, please. Thanks. Over the last few months, we've just instituted a new online tool on our website, that, on the KEDC website. We had a, it's not unusual for folks to have real estate on their, leasing's on their website. We had one, a system that was a little bit older that hadn't, didn't have the functionalities that we were looking for and didn't have the corporate support, so we were ready for a new online system to assist. And really, it's an opportunity to coalesce a lot of properties that the real estate community has already got listed on their own websites, but just add that one more for us. So if somebody's just saying, "Tell me what's in Colleen," this becomes that central database location. It is a, it's both for industrial and commercial properties, it's updated on a monthly basis by the software company that operates at Resimplify. And somebody can search for properties using the map, so if they know the community wanna be close to highways or road networks, property, specific property, size, dimensions, those kinda things. We will support some of it on our end from input, for the most part, though the company does a great deal of the input themselves. So we're real excited about having that already on the market, online. It's got 158 properties as of the other day, it could be anything today, I have to check that. And to put, really, one way to drive people to our website that can promote Colleen a little bit better. Again, real estate is what drives our business and so the more we can tell the story of what's already active, we have a lot of folks who are in-market and out-of-market who represent properties in this community and this just helps to coalesce a lot of that opportunity for folks who are seeking new locations. Next slide. We've been pretty active in the last couple of months. It's, you know, if you're familiar with the rotation of things, the presidential election slows down the economic development process a little bit into the fall, into the holidays, it really starts to pick up a little bit. So we've seen, submitted 13 new projects. We have actively 13 companies that are looking at some specific activities, 40 in the pipeline from a variety of different levels of response that we're referring to. So we feel like we started the year quick, it's already moving even faster, got two more today. I mean, it's, I think this year's gonna be a very busy year for us and having some tools and real estate that we need is gonna be very helpful. We attended the MD&amp;M, or Medical Device and Manufacturing Show in California a couple weeks ago. That's, is now a combination, you might have seen this from last year, the year before, we've done this just about every year, because it's a coalition of medical device, plastics, some machinery and equipment, packaging and a design industry, all in one show. It saves time and effort and allows us to be in one place and see a lot of companies. We participated with that, with Encore and their Economic Development Group. And then we've, I've now been put on the Team Texas Board of Directors and that's a group, statewide group that helps to schedule out and coordinate some travel, some events and some meetings that we can meet with companies throughout the year, so being able to be part of that as we schedule out some of this year and schedule out, as part of that, our schedule for the coming year. After that, I think one more slide, I think that's it. Yeah, thank you very much. I'm happy to answer any questions as we get the year going.
Council, y'all have any questions? Once again, Scott, we thank you.
Thank you.
I thank Councilmember Cobb, Mayor Pro-Tim Gonzalez, myself, along with Mr. Kegel, we all serve on that KEDC with you. And I am excited, I cannot go in details about the state of the city because it's not on this agenda, but some of the things that KEDC have done and will continue to do was highlighted during that presentation and also the new Vice President. We are looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Madam Secretary.
PR 25005, local park grant awarded to Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mrs. Roberts.
Good afternoon. My name is Caitlin Roberts, I'm the Recreation Manager, I'm filling in for the Parks and Recreation Director today. Is this working? Next.
And Council, she have also, after this one, the next two items.
All right. So a little background for you, Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Local Park Grant Program assists local governments with acquisition and/or development of recreation areas and facilities throughout the state of Texas. This program provides a 50% matching grants on a reimbursement basis to eligible applicants. City Council approved the grant application July 18th, 2024, and city staff submitted the application to Texas Parks and Wildlife July 31st, 2024. Next. This grant was approved for funding by the Texas Parks and Wildlife Commission, January 23rd, 2025. Colleen ranked number eight out of a pool of 58 non-urban outdoor applicants. Only 22 projects were funded in this category. This grant is going to pay for the Long Branch Park resurface, one existing tennis court into four new pickleball court surfaces, plated pickleball nets, net posts, sidewalk repairs and a curb ramp. The estimated cost is $25,000. So this is an image that shows the one existing tennis court that we have there and then the next image will show the updated where the four new pickleball courts will go. Here. Any questions?
No, there is not. Madam Secretary.
PR 25006, Life Jacket Grant Awarded to Parks and Recreation.
All right. So the purpose here is a notification of the Life Jacket Grant awarded to Colleen Parks and Recreation through the Sea Toe Foundation in conjunction with the United States Coast Guard. A little background here, Bell County drowning rates are higher than the national average, 1.83 drownings per 100,000 overall, and then 2.48 drownings per 100,000 in minority groups. Several programs are available to help combat this statistic. Some benefits of this, the state-of-the-art life jackets for patrons to use at city aquatic facilities and local boating areas, step-by-step training and instruction to staff and patrons on how to safely use life jackets. This will eliminate the cost of city purchasing up to 200 life jackets and storage for aquatic facilities yearly. Will save us up to 6,200 each year on life jacket replacement costs due to theft or regular wear and tear, and minimize up to $908 in annual costs for life jacket stands and signage needed because of routine wear and tear. Operations, mandatory life jacket station and monthly use reporting will be maintained by aquatic supervisor, and then life jacket stations will be located at Lions Club Park at the Family Aquatic Center through that aquatic season, May through September, and then at the Family Recreation Center, September through May. This is just a picture of what that stand looks like. And then do you all have any questions?
No, ma'am, there are no questions, but thank you all for all the resources that you provide, and there's a lifesaving measure that is needed. Madam Secretary.
PR 25007, Colleen Parks and Recreation Acceptance Into the American Red Cross Centennial Campaign Program.
All right. This is for notification of Colleen Parks and Recreation Acceptance Into the American Red Cross Centennial Campaign. A little background here, drownings remains the leading cause of death among children aged one to four. In Bell County, these rates exceed the national average. Last year, KPR successfully conducted swim lessons and whale tail sessions engaging 850 participants. American Red Cross is celebrating 100 years of water safety programming. As part of the Centennial Campaign, American Red Cross has selected 100 cities to honor this milestone and recognize 100 years of success in water safety. Some benefits, state-of-the-art training for staff to enhance their ability to recognize aquatic emergencies, offset and waived costs for staff training and study materials, reduced swim lesson fees for up to 200 eligible patrons annually, designation as an ambassador to water, complimentary swag bags for all Centennial Campaign participants, and national recognition from the American Red Cross.
Thank you so much. There are no questions.
We are at the work session, discuss Agenda Items 6 through 19 for February 18, 2025 Regular Session. MN 25004, Consider Minutes of Regular City Council Meeting of January 21, 2025. MN 25005, Consider Minutes of Regular City Council Meeting of February 4, 2025. RS 25021, Consider a Memorandum Resolution Awarding Bid Number 2509, Street Construction Materials to Asphalt Inc., LLC, DBA Lone Star Paving, Craft Co., Inc., DIJ Construction, Colleen Crush Stone, and Colleen Ready Mix, in a total amount not to exceed $1 million.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Reynolds, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Reynolds, you were not here last week, and you were not on to speak. One of the questions that I will be asking all department heads is how does this benefit the city, and how does it benefit the residents?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
As stated in the review by the Secretary, this is awarded bid number 2509, Street Construction Materials. Annually, the city solicits bids for street construction materials. Materials are used by multiple departments within the city for a variety of different applications, including some being in construction and repair of roadways, parking areas, and water mains. Also used by Parks and Rec Department, other departments as stated earlier. Contracts can be utilized throughout the city, so this million dollars covers all departments within the city, we just can't exceed a million dollars. On December 4th, we went out for, but we received a bid on this, 2509, construction materials, and the following five vendors were selected, Asphalt Inc., Craft Co., DIJ, Colleen Crush Stone, and Colleen Ready Mix. And staff recommends the city council authorize the award of bid number 2509, Street Construction Materials, to the selected vendors in an amount of not to exceed $1 million citywide for FY '25, and authorize the city manager or designated executive to execute the agreements, and furthermore, execute any and all change orders within the amount set by state and local law. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and this benefits the residents in the city by allowing us to maybe go out and get asphalt. One of the major benefits is we all get, potholes get called in daily. And this is what, this is the contract we use to go out and get asphalt to fill the potholes. This is used to repair parking lots, as stated with asphalt repairs in parking lots. If we're doing sidewalk repairs, concrete is used for that, and when we're doing ditch repairs with riprap. So that's what we use this for.
Thank you for that, Mr. Reynolds, because residents can also go to our website to report those potholes to the staff.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25022, Consider a Memorandum Resolution Accepting the Victims of Crime Act, VOCA, 2025 Crisis Assistance Program Grant Through the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel Chief Lopez have the, two items before you. Good afternoon, Chief Lopez.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Mayor Pro, Tim, Counsel. I'm here to present the grant acceptance for the Victims of Crime Act for fiscal year 2025. The Victim Assistance Office of the Police Department has been awarded a one-year grant from the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division to fund the continuation of our crisis assistance program. This grant will provide funding for the crime victims clerk, continue professional counseling services, emergency financial assistance, and temporary shelter services for safety to victims of violent crimes. Grant funds awarded to the city of Colleen are $87,523.81. This year, there's a 20% cash match requirement in the amount of $21,880.95. The total project amount is $109,447.76. Matching funds are already budgeted as part of the crime victims liaison salary. Recommendation, staff recommends that the city council authorize the city manager or that there's a need to accept the 2025 VOCA grant award for the Colleen Crisis Assistance Program. This authorization includes the power to sign the application, as well as to reject, modify, or terminate the grant if necessary. Additionally, the city manager or that there's a need will be authorized to allocate the required matching funds in the form of cash contributions. The recommendations further allows the Colleen Police Department to manage and implement the grant responsibilities under the supervision of the city's finance department. In the event of any misuse or loss of grant funds, the city agrees to promptly reimburse the Criminal Justice Division or the Office of the Governor. And this grant will benefit the city in two ways. It allows, it allows the department to employ a dedicated person, whose only responsibility is to serve the victims of crime. And most importantly, it provides services to the victims of crimes. In 2024, we provided over 1,600 services to the citizens of Colleen. And to have any, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief, for that thorough update on the slides, and thank you, your department, for all you do for our crime victims. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25023, Consider a Memorandum Resolution Accepting the Fiscal Year 2024, BJA Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG Grant, and Approving an Interlocal Agreement with the City of Temple and Bell County.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Chief.
Yes, ma'am. This is another grant opportunity that we participate in on a yearly basis, and the Colleen Police Department has successfully applied for and received the 2024 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, we call it JAG, in the amount of $85,235. Annually, the city of Colleen collaborates with Bell County and the City of Temple through an interlocal agreement to share the grant funds. As per their agreement, the city of Colleen is responsible for managing the funds, which includes distributing them, overseeing compliance, submitting performance reports, and assessment data, and offering continuous support to recipients. The total JAG award, like I said, is $85,234. Our share of the award is $43,043. KPD anticipates utilizing these funds towards the purchase of equipment to enhance our ability to respond to emergency events, and there are no matching funds for this grant. Staff recommends that the city council approve the acceptance of the JAG grant, 2024 JAG Grant, through the Colleen Police Department on behalf of all involved parties. Additionally, it is recommended that the city manager or that there's a need be authorized to sign the interlocal agreement, and that the Colleen Police Department be permitted to allocate and manage the grant responsibilities under the supervision of the city's finance department. And this grant will benefit the city because it allows the department to purchase additional safety equipment that's not budgeted for. So this is, we're using this grant to purchase on pepperball guns and breaching tools. And I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Lopez. There are no questions.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25024, Consider a Memorandum Resolution Adopting the Arts Commission Rules and Regulations.
Thank you, Mrs. Tengalan.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. The next item is the Arts Commission Requested Rules Changes. Some background, the Arts Commission Rules and Regulations last revised were in September 2022. The rules and regulations revisions process is the rules and regulations are committed in a state finance and legal recommend the rule changes. Then the Arts Commission reviews and approve. The Arts Commission voted to approve rules and regulations on December 13, 2024. Requested rules and regulations are presented to city council for consideration. The highlights of the proposed changes are the commission members must leave in the city of Colleen, the commissioners allowed to participate in the virtual meetings if physical corona is met, commissioners may recommend removal of a commissioner with five or more absences in a year, remove language allowing grantees to draw down funds prior to their event, add a language preventing an applicant's grant request to exceed 50% of the total grant request, add a grant, application of grading criteria based on, in reasonability of the request funding, add a language preventing transfer of grant, granted funds from one event to another to occur retroactively, add a language limiting transfers of funds between events to once per grant cycle, add a language to specify ineligible activities for funding, remove requirements for certificate of fact dated in current year, add a language that the city staff may offer marketing workshops to assist grantees in promoting their programs and initiatives, update a language to require grantees to submit proof of hotel and motel rooms usage within the city of Colleen. In the recommendation, the city council approved the Colleen Arts Commission rule changes effective for the fiscal year 2026 grant cycle. Chair Miller and Commissioner Fralias here from the Arts Commissioner, and also the Management Accountant Rachel Martin are here, if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. I only have one question for you. If I understood you clearly, the board wanted these changes, not the staff.
That's correct. The board has a committee where they come up with the changes. Yes, ma'am.
All right. Just counsel, know that this is what the board want in order to function and move forward in fairness to, with these grants. So I think that's important, that they have a seat, and they had all the seat. That is great. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yes, Madam Secretary. Oh, we, Mayor Pro, Tim, you have a question?
Mrs. Tengalan, thank you. There was a section that you had that said about adding a retroactive date. Can we just go back to that? I just wanted to have you just reread that to me, just for clarity, I appreciate it. Right here, added language preventing transfer of granted funds from one event to another to occur retroactively. Can we elaborate on that for me, please?
Can, ma'am, could you come, oh, she, come on, she was looking at you. You come on up, please. State your name for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. My name is Rachel Martin, and I'm the Management Accountant, and I was the staff liaison to the Arts Commission when these rules and regulations were passed.
Okay. Can you answer her question?
Yes, ma'am. The transfer of granted funds from one event to occur to another retroactively means that a grantee cannot come up to the Arts Commission and request that they increase or change the amount of granted funds they were given to an event after that event has already occurred. It's on the grantee to be able to budget for the event before it happens, and it's not really a fair process for them to be able to go back after it's been finally approved to get that approval from the Arts Commission to get the grant amount adjusted or increased.
And just as a point of clarity on the, the grantees, do they, if they don't use it under this situation, do they lose those funds at that point?
Yes. Unused, unused grant funds would be returned to the city's fund balance.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Madam Secretary.
RS 25025, Consider a Memorandum Resolution Awarding Request for Proposals, Number 2504, Delinquent Account Receivables Collection Services to McCreary, Valeska, Bragg, and Allen PC.
Thank you. Mrs. Luciano?
Luciano.
Yes, ma'am, hon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Counsel, City Manager. As discussed, or stated, I'll be discussing the delinquent account receivable collections and the process taken to select a firm. The current delinquent account collection services agreement has ended, therefore, on November 3rd, the city issued a request for proposal. Six proposals were received and evaluated by city staff. The evaluation criteria for proposals is as follows: relevant experience and success in collection accounts receivables for similar entities, the experience, resources, and qualifications of the company or firm and individual assigned to the account, delinquent collection philosophy and strategy to include fee assessment and demonstrated performance, including complaints filed by debaters pursuant to federal collection law, oral presentation on collection methodology and process, the ability to provide the necessary reporting on the progress of collection for all fines, and amount of assistance required by staff. The top three evaluated firms were interviewed. After evaluating the proposals and conducting the interview process, staff determined that McCreary, Valeska, Bragg, and Allen PC offered the best overall value and services for the city's delinquent collection needs. The estimated annual cost is $60,000 to $65,000. Staff recommends that city council award the request for proposal 25-04 for delinquent account collection services to McCreary, Valeska, Bragg, and Allen PC, and authorize the city manager or designated to execute the agreement and any supplemental agreements or amendments as allowed by state and local law. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What are those delinquent accounts?
The ones that were included within the RFP are for utility collections, the aviation department, accounting department, EMS services, and municipal court.
Thank you. I had inquired previously regarding a company that we utilized before that was also in consideration for utilization under this. They were not selected, but I had some questions regarding the process, and are you able to assist me with those questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in general. And so one of the things was the collection accounts, how long that, how long do we work them? So understanding collections in general, it does take some time. And so do we know how long this MVVA will work these collection accounts?
As far as the length of time, so the collections, depending on the type, whether it's utility collections, aviation, accounting, EMS, it's going to depend on our internal process. So for instance, accounting department, we will send out internal notifications 30, 60, 90 days, and then after that, it's sent to the collection firm, and then they will work that account based off of our agreement. I don't have that specifics, but they will do the same process, where then they will start sending out notifications and collections, notices to them every 30 to 120 days, and then do that not only with letters, but phone calls as well. And that will remain there until we decide we want to pull that account from them.
Thank you. And so looking at an excerpt from their, their contract that they submitted for approval, there was a, it looks like a one-year working of the, of the collections. a, it looks like a one-year working of the, of the collections accounts. Now, the question that was posed to me was really trying to understand the charge of the sixty-five thousand. So previously before, we understand there was a company that was in place for whatever reason that we chose not to use that company. However, this company is now coming with a charge. So can you please explain to me why there was no charge before and now we're dealing with sixty-five thousand dollars particularly for this company as far as what does that entail specifically?
Sure. So we've had charges with our previous collection companies dependent on what it is. So for instance, the Utility Collections Aviation Department, Accounting Department, and EMS would charge a twenty-five percent based off of what they collect and then anything for Municipal Court is a thirty percent. And I'm sorry, what was the second half of your question?
Let me just understand where that sixty-five thousand is coming from, what the difference is?
Yeah, so.
Is that the estimation of what?
Yes, estimation portion of what the city would pay to the collection service, collection firm based off of what the firm collects annually.
Understood.
So a percentage based off of what they collect.
Thank you. And if we are only, if that company is only working collections for a year and we know on average, we talk about, just in sales in general, you have your low hanging fruit and then you have the things that accumulate over time that become harder to work, but in order to recoup those funds, especially from the other departments as you move through that process, is there a reason why we only have a cap or this company only has a cap of one year for recouping the funds?
I'm not sure of that answer to that question.
If we can just pose that so I can get an answer to that, I would appreciate it.
I can get that for you. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Councilmember Segura.
Thank you, Mayor. And my question was kind of in line of her last statement what she was talking about because I remember the percentage. So just for clarification, the sixty, sixty-five thousand that they're paying, so we, we're no longer getting charged a percentage at all?
So that is based off of the percentage?
Oh, so that is based off? I got it.
Yes, and so in the dollar figure, we're estimating sixty to sixty-five thousand to pay the firm annually based off of what they're going to collect.
Got it. So it's nothing that we're paying upfront, it's all based on?
Correct, right. And that, that will fluctuate depending on if they collect more or less.
Do we have, I'm sure we keep track of that, but do we have like comparisons of, you know, how much, did they kind of give you an estimate of how much would be collected and compared to other companies that we have in the past? How much we're going to expect to collect on these?
Yes, sir, they do. I do not have that number, but I can provide that to you.
Okay.
That was in their proposal solicitation.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
No problem.
And Ms. Tangalan, I have a question for you and also, council, y'all have questions that's going to require to bring back information. So, so if you're not clear, maybe that's something you might want to consider table it if we don't have clarity because there's several questions that have not been answered. Ms. Tangalan, the Municipal Court that falls upon you and they were collecting their own funds, what made you change it to put it up under this company? This, well, I'm not sure if they voted on it or not, but what made that, what was the change?
Yes, ma'am. Municipal Court stopped those, the collection services, I believe, a few months ago with, whenever they came up with the idea, I actually recommended not to do it, but they decided to do it instead. And then after I took over Municipal Court, we have a meeting with the court administrator and the judge and they, I brought that up again because I believe that we do need to have collections, to outsource collections for long-term debt. They did agree with it and that's why we included in the RFP.
So they agreed with it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Ms. Tangalan. And I do agree with you on the collection of the long-term debt. The only concern I have is with this, the way it's written, I just get the clarity, is the one year because that's not enough for collections under their normal, just basic standards. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to table, can I do that now at this point? Not yet. Okay, thank you.
You can pull it during our meeting? Okay.
May I add some clarification?
It's a couple of things that need to be clarified.
Yes, about the sixty-five thousand dollars. I do, I understand what's going on. Yes, the prior vendor did not have a fee and this vendor doesn't either for Municipal Court. This item is to cover Municipal Court plus more. So the sixty-five thousand dollars that we estimate is not for Municipal Court collections. Municipal Court has a twenty percent fee that is legally, they can actually post that fee to the defendant. So that's why it's not actually a cost for the city. That amount is not included in here. So we did pay collections to another vendor for everything but Municipal Court. So I think we're not comparing apples to apples and we can bring up the difference in, yes, in the, after, before the regular meeting. That's, yes, I think that's one of the clarifications I would like to.
Yes, ma'am. I, I don't think that's their concern. I just asked the question, what council member Segura or Mayor Proton was more so about the amount and he had another question in about a percent. But we will take a break before we go into citizen comments and you have that opportunity to get that information to council and they either table it or they vote on it tonight.
Thank you.
And I, thank you. And council, thank you for that because I think before you move forward on any vote, everybody need to be clear on what you voted on. Thank you, councilmember Segura and Mayor Proton for that. And thank you, Ms. Tangalan and Ms., thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-five zero-two-six, consider a memorandum resolution re-adopting the financial governance policy to include the investment policy.
Welcome back, ma'am.
Thank you. Last council meeting on February fourth, I discussed the proposed changes for the financial governance policy. I have that same presentation again. Would you like for me to go through that again?
No, ma'am, you do not have to go through it unless the council, do there any changes or highlights to it?
No.
All right, council, if you remember, two weeks ago, she presented the changes. There are simple changes, just a update, no major changes to it. Would you like for her to go back through it? No, ma'am. Thank you kindly. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-five zero-two-seven, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing an agreement with Jamel and Smith Construction L.P. for maintenance and repairs for the transfer station push wall project in the amount of two-hundred-two-thousand-seven-hundred-two dollars and three cents.
Thank you very much. Council, Mr. Zager have the next two items. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and good afternoon, councilmembers. So we're here to go over the approval hopefully for the contract agreement with Jamel Smith and then Smith for the construction of the push wall repair. So on January fifteenth of twenty-twenty-three, a fire occurred at the transfer station that damaged the steel plating on the, what they call the push wall. That's where all the equipment goes, they push the trash, load it up, and they allow it to go into the tunnels. The city entered an agreement with Freezing Nichols last year to perform a design for what is needed to repair that, that wall. City advertised similar to that last project we heard a couple of weeks ago, twice on September fourth and again on May thirtieth. We didn't receive bids on either case, so we approached the buy board, approached Jamel and Smith for quotes, worked with them for several months to get a price where between us, the design engineer and the contractor to come up to what we feel is agreeable based on what the work is. I guess I got ahead of myself, but, so we reached out to Jamel Smith. The Jamel Smith approached us with a contract proposal in the amount of two-hundred-two-thousand seven-hundred-two dollars and three cents in order to perform the repairs. The prepare, the repair of this project is being coordinated with risk management and the city's insurance to get reimbursement towards the, this repair. We're still going back and forth obviously with the cost and what the actual bid that came in from the contractor. The next picture, next slide shows kind of what those repairs are. So this is all steel plating and it's been buckled, it's popped out, there are rivets, connections that are popping out because of the high temperature that occurred from the fire. And so all this has to be, we, the damaged portions have to be cut out, replaced, and then the backing, the glues and everything behind it and the concrete repairs will all be part of this contract. And then staff recommends that the City Council authorize the execution of the agreement with Jamel Smith for the, for the amount that we discussed. This is in regard to the reference to the benefit to the public is that this is our transfer station. We get a lot of residents and contractors and business owners that use that on a daily basis to drop off those heavy loads and all that, recyclables and the stuff that goes to those transfer stations. So it is a, it's a vital asset to the city and to the public.
And it's also a safety hazard.
Yes.
Something that should have been fixed, but due to circumstances, we can just now get around to it. And it's basically pushing the trash?
Yes.
And it go in like a dumpster?
Well, no. So you get on the floor, you know, the dump, the trucks and everything loaded on the floor. Then you have a large loader, a piece of equipment that has the big bucket, they got to scoop it and they got to then push it towards those tunnels. So a couple of weeks ago, we were here about the tunnel repair. So where all the trash gets thrown, you know, pushed down into the tunnel, underneath are the trucks.
Right.
And the scales. So we got to get the trash and the stuff loaded over there so it goes over to the.
So it push it?
Yep.
The trash so it can go down the tunnel in the truck?
Yep. In order to officially get it there.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you for, you all, you do an excellent job on your presentations and you make it so simple that our residents at home can understand and I truly appreciate that about you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Madam Secretary.
RS twenty-five zero-two-eight, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a professional services agreement with Kleinfelder, Inc. for environmental and geotechnical services in the amount of seventy-thousand-three-hundred-thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. So this item is to get an agreement with Kleinfelder, who is an environmental and geotechnical consultant, to perform some services for those design build projects that we have going on from the last year's bond. This is the maintenance, the fleet, the park maintenance building, Fleet Services Building, and the police evidence storage facility. What they're going to have to do is go out through the geotechnical analysis, determine what the soils, anything that's going to be used towards a foundation design, anything that's going to be needed by that design build contractor consultant. In addition, we also have some environmental services that are going to be over at the fleet, the location we're proposing for the fleet maintenance, maintenance facility, which is the old transfer station there off of one ninety-five. It was, it had been used as a scrapyard after us. There's been a lot of things that we don't know about, so we are doing that environmental, that first level where they go and do an assessment, kind of see if there's anything that we need to be aware of or not be surprised by. So that, this can, this contract is to perform those testings and investigations at all those locations. The request, again, this is tied to the design build and be aware, next week on the twentieth is when we're supposed to be getting proposals from those groups, the design build contractor group, to hopefully get some proposals and qualifications that we can review and move to the next step, which will lead to coming back to council. This in regard to the geotechnical for staff, we negotiated with Kleinfelder, came up with a price of seventy-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And staff recommends that council approve, authorize the City Manager to enter into the agreement with Kleinfelder.
Yes, sir, and this has to be done in order.
It does.
This residents, we, this teachable moment every time we come up here.
Yeah, it does. Before you design anything, you got to know what, what's underneath. If you're going to be build a building, you got to know what soils are underneath there, what strengths, how you're going to design that foundation. Is it going to be a concrete flat, you know, spread footing? Is you have to do piles? Do you have to overexcuse? We just got to know what's there.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that. Any questions? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
PH twenty-five zero-zero-five, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Jim Wright on behalf of Doyle Struve, case number twenty-four thirty-four, to rezone approximately four-point-five-eight-four acres, being part of Lot Nine, Block One, out of the Southwest Crossing addition from R-one, Single Family Residential District, to B-two, Local Retail District. The subject property is locally addressed as eighty-fifty-eight Tremere Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, council. Mrs. Messer has the next four items. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is a request to rezone approximately four and a half acres from R-one to B-two. The property is located at eight-zero-five-eight Tremere Road. If approved, the applicant intends to use the property as a psychiatrist's office. It's generally located, again, on the northwest corner of Stagecoach Road in Tremere. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the site. A view of the subject property facing east from Tremere. View of the adjacent property to the west on the opposite side of Tremere. This is a view from the subject property facing north along Tremere and a view from the subject property facing south. Subject property is located in the control growth sector on the growth sector map and is designated residential mix on the future land use map. The residential mix place type encourages up to twenty-five percent non-residential uses and up to ninety-five percent residential uses. The request supports several of our Colleen twenty-forty comprehensive plan recommendations, including encouraging incremental evolution of neighborhoods, building complete neighborhoods, and coordinating land use mobility strategies to create commercial notes. Based on the size of the existing structure, staff estimates that the change in use will generate approximately three-hundred-and-fifty daily trips, which will not trigger the requirement for traffic impact analysis. However, if in the future the property is redeveloped, a TAA may be required at that time. Staff does find that the request is consistent with the Colleen twenty-forty comprehensive plan. And we notified twenty-eight surrounding property owners regarding this request and have received no written responses, either in support or in opposition. This is the notification boundary for that property. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the request to rezone the property from R-one to B-two. And the Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval at their January thirteenth meeting by a vote of six this year. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Because that, that's going to be my question because it is a high-traffic area with that school being across the street from the Career Center and then down the street Omega Church is down there. That was going to be my question. But you answer it. Councilmember Board.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, the legislative text suggests that the proposed use is for a psychiatrist's office on four-point-five acres. Do we know if that's the absolute intent or is the intent to have something larger to expand more businesses into it?
It's my understanding at this time that the applicant's intent is to keep the existing structure in place and rehabilitate it or reuse it for commercial purposes, but the applicant is here tonight to answer any additional questions.
Okay.
The applicant, Mr. Wright, is he here? Oh, sir. The council have a question for you.
Good evening.
So the question in particular is that I understand this is a rezoning case and we're looking to renovate the existing homes, is that correct?
That's what the individual indicated that he would probably do.
Okay, that's all I got. Thanks.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Secretary. Oh, I'm sorry, did you finish? Okay, we still.
PH twenty-five zero-zero-six, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance approving a city-initiated request, case number Z-twenty-four thirty-five, to rezone approximately four-point-six-one-three acres out of the J.H. Lewis Survey, abstract number five-three-six, Terminal Parcels one, two, and three, from A Agricultural District to B-three, Local Business District. The subject property is generally located southwest of the intersection of Chet Edwards Loop and South Clear Creek Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This item is a city-initiated request to, again, rezone roughly four and a half acres from agricultural to B-three. The red star on your screen indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the site. So this is, is property that is owned by the city of Colleen and is currently zoned agricultural, so it doesn't allow for any, any type of commercial development. So the intent is just to rezone this for any potential future commercial development. This is a view of the subject property facing south from Clear Creek Road. This is a view of the property facing north from Clear Creek Road. View from the subject property facing east along Clear Creek Road. And this is a view from the subject property facing west toward Colleen Regional Airport. Subject property is located in the neighborhood infill sector on the growth map and is designated campus on the future land use map. The neighborhood infill sector includes areas of the city that have access to city services and infrastructure but have vacant, underutilized, or poorly developed properties. And the campus place type encourages up to one-hundred percent non-residential and up to twenty-five percent residential use mix. The request supports or furthers several of our Colleen twenty-forty comprehensive plan recommendations, including using. including using place types and complete neighborhoods as building blocks and improving the fiscal productivity of development. We notified four surrounding property owners and we've received no written responses, either in support or opposition. This is the notification boundary. Uh, and with that, staff does find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and we are recommending approval of the city initiated request to rezone the property to B-three. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. That concludes my presentation.
So is this city property for leasing or buying, purchasing the land?
It's my understanding that we're, uh, the intent for now is to retain ownership of the property.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you. Madam Secretary.
PH twenty-five zero zero seven, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance approving a request submitted by TCG Engineering LLC on behalf of GWC Holdings LLC, case number twenty-four thirty-six, to rezone approximately a hundred and seven point six acres out of the WH Coal Two Survey, abstract number two hundred, from A Agricultural District to R-one, Single Family Residential District, and B-three, Local Business District. The subject property is locally addressed as eighty-three ninety Featherline Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor and council, this is a, uh, request to rezone approximately a hundred and seven point six acres located along Featherline Road, uh, from agricultural to R-one and B-three, Local Business District. The request includes a hundred and four point two acres of R-one and three point four acres of B-three located along Featherline. If approved, the applicant estimates that the subject property will yield approximately three hundred single family lots. The red star indicates the location of the property. This is an aerial of the, uh, requested rezone property. And this is an exhibit showing, uh, the configuration of the R-one relative to the proposed R-three. Uh, I'm sorry, excuse me, B-three, uh, commercial. So, so the yellow indicates the R-one and the red indicates the B-three. This is a view of the subject property facing northwest. A view of the subject property facing south along Featherline. This is a view of the adjacent property on the opposite side of Featherline. View of the subject property facing southwest. Subject property is located in the control growth sector on the, on the growth sector map and the residential mix. Uh, it's designated residential mix on the future land use map. Control growth sector includes areas of the city that have access to city infrastructure in close proximity and the residential mix place type encourages up to twenty-five percent non-residential and up to ninety-five percent residential use mix. The request supports or furthers several of our Clean Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan recommendations, including using place types and complete neighborhoods as building blocks, improving the fiscal productivity of development, encouraging incremental evolution of neighborhoods, building complete neighborhoods, and improving network connectivity. Water, sewer, and drainage utility service are all available. Uh, ingress and egress to the property is via Featherline Road. Uh, and the proposed development will require a traffic impact analysis. We notified a hundred and one surrounding property owners regarding this request and we have received one written response in opposition. This is the notification boundary. And with that, staff does find that the applicant's request is consistent with the Clean Twenty Forty Comprehensive Plan and we are recommending approval of the request to rezone the property from Ag to R-one and B-three. Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval, uh, by a vote of four to, four to two. Uh, those commissioners in opposition to the motion, uh, expressed concerns or echo the concerns brought up by the, the citizens during the public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Happy to answer any questions you have.
And what was those concerns? I'm sorry.
Uh, there were concerns about the, um, adequacy of infrastructure. And, uh, generally, uh, traffic, um, traffic and infrastructure primarily.
It was traffic and infrastructure, cuz see, what, I mean, the, my concern is I don't wanna make this a campaign headquarters. I mean, I, I just don't want have to have ten, fifteen, twenty people making this, I'm running on this. And, I mean, we do that a lot when a certain subject come up and that's all we know. We don't know anything else, but that one subject is a hot button for a lot of people. And the staff, uh, approved this.
Staff's recommendation is.
Yes, why?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, due to, uh, consistency with the comprehensive plan. Um, and, uh, consistency with, uh, the future land use map and with the character of the area in general.
Right. And with that being said, even though we have a turning lane over there, let's talk about timeline. I mean, what I'm trying to come across, it's just not true. It's, it's, these are all teachable moments for residents at home or people that's new here. And we know this been going on for a while. And there's a need, comprehensive plan plays a big role. And I thank you for your, um, detail and how you going about this presentation. But there's residents that's there, maybe they just don't understand the timeline of when this project begin, the timeline when we start working on Featherline. Break that all down. Uh, that's what I'm trying to come across, that, that I want the council to make a decision based on, on facts. We heard a lot, a lot of stuff has happened, but a lot of things transpired too, that this is the only talking point. They don't care about what happens and they do care. So would you please take a little time and just let the resident know why the city of Colleen agreed to this? Not only just the comprehensive plan, but why, and then Featherline, how this gonna impact people riding on that roadway?
Yes, ma'am. Are you asking for a, a timeline of the construction of Featherline?
Everything, anything that, if I never heard this before and I went by what a stranger told me and I signed something, I probably shouldn't cuz I didn't know. Uh, I just want you to make it clear to them.
Sure. Well, I can, I can sort of.
Okay, Mr. Zagers, could you come on in and help her out on that?
Um, sure. I think I, I can't really speak for the development by, just based on what we've seen before with other developments.
Yes, because we have everybody speak on Featherline, just want it simple and plain.
Okay, so you have two different things going on. You have your Featherline Road reconstruction, which is the city project that is approved by council that is currently under design. It just started. We figure it's gonna be two years to get the design done before we go out for construction and another year of construction. So three years, uh, for that part. The construction of a development, now there's two different developments, but they're working, hopefully gonna coordinate themselves together. But regardless, when a development comes in, they're gonna first go through the plating process if that is needed, which this person's doing right now. And then they're gonna get their engineer, they're gonna get whatever designer they have, and they have to then do the design of their, of their land. Uh, that could take up to a year, depending on how, what they have it in place. We haven't really seen that much. So they're gonna do some surveying, they're gonna do the geotech, they're gonna do all that analysis in order to get their plans ready. Well, then, what they do is they're gonna get their plans and they're gonna submit it for a permit. So that permit review goes through the city, uh, in particular to the land and the infrastructure that goes to the engineering department. And they will go through a couple of rounds. Takes, you know, a good year and a half, two years before they probably will have to get everything ready to go out to construction. And then they're gonna go out, they're just gonna build the roads, the water, the sewer, uh, all the infrastructure. So they're not touching homes, they're not touching anything on that. So realistically, that could take, you know, another three years. So when we're out doing the road, they're gonna be on the site, but it's like, it's gonna be off the road itself. You'll see the construction entrance and it'll be all coordinated with what we have, have, have out there at the same time. By the time we're done with the road, by the time they're done with the infrastructure, that's when the home builders come in and that could take years. But by then, that's when people move in, that's when you're gonna start seeing the additional traffic on the road and additional use of water and sewer and all that at that point. By then though, we'll at least be done with the road.
Thank you. The road will have been completed.
Correct.
Before the first home is built.
We're hope, uh, uh, possibly. I mean, most likely, but they're not gonna build three hundred homes, they're gonna build five or six, so.
Okay.
The chances are yes, but I can't guarantee, you know, we'll have to see what happens in three years.
Yes, sir, thank you. Councilmember Board, then, uh, councilwoman called.
Thank you, madam mayor. I just wanna point out to the public that a hundred and one property owners regarding the request were notified. I believe fifty-one of those were qualified within the boundary and the city staff received only one written response in opposition. Thank you.
Councilmember Board, uh, we couldn't really hear. Could you say that one more time, ti- time loudly?
Sure. And looking at the presentation, staff notified one hundred and one surrounding property owners regarding the request. Fifty-two of them reside outside of the boundary, which means about fifty of them had the opportunity to respond. And we, the city staff only received one response in opposition. I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Good evening. It is most imperative that we think about what, I have to think about what my word has been for those, for Featherline and that road. I, I cannot adequately go forward saying more development until we complete the infrastructure and make sure those roads and everything is complete. If we impede upon continuing with the infrastructure, once it's done, then we still have the time. Because we keep talking about this three-year measurement, that it's still time to come back and get the rest, stage two done.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
PH twenty-five zero zero eight, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the City of Colleen thoroughfare plan.
Mrs. Messer, break it down now.
Yes, ma'am. Excuse me. This is a proposal to, uh, amend the existing thoroughfare plan for the City of Colleen. Uh, as you know, the city's thoroughfare plan establishes a transportation network for the city and establishes the framework for orderly development, um, of roadways, including alignments, connections, transportation linkages, et cetera. As new development occurs, it becomes necessary to update the thoroughfare plan accordingly. So as you alluded to earlier, the comprehensive plan and the thoroughfare plan are a living document and they do require, uh, update from time to time. So this is really just a, a very, um, routine update to the thoroughfare plan that we're proposing tonight. Uh, we are recommending updates to the thoroughfare plan after having reviewed the twenty-twenty-two thoroughfare plan and, uh, we find that these amendments are necessary to align with recent residential and commercial developments and account for, uh, existing topography. So the slide on your screen shows the eight locations where we are proposing to amend the thoroughfare plan. Um, and I'll, I'll go through each of these one at a time. First area, um, we're proposing to reclassify Black Orchid Drive from a marginal access to a local street and proposing to eliminate the future connection between Black Orchid Drive and Folly Drive. So this exhibit shows those changes. Again, just, just removing that, um, connection there at the top. For area two, we're proposing to reclassify Pauline Drive and Gilbert Drive from collectors to residential collectors. Uh, you can see that change here. Uh, essentially what that change means is that we have a lot of roads that are designated collectors on our thoroughfare plan, but that don't actually function that way, uh, due to, uh, residential driveways in a lot of cases, in, impeding the flow of, of traffic as, as would be expected on a collector. So we've added another designation of residential collector. And that's what we're proposing to change these two streets to here. For area three, we're recommending reclassifying the future east-west connection to Prior Patch Lane from a minor arterial to a collector. Uh, recommending reclassifying the future north-south connection from Generation Drive to Castle Gap from a collector to a residential collector and changing the designation of Mohawk from a minor arterial to a proposed minor arterial. So you can see those changes reflected here. On the left is the existing thoroughfare plan and on the right is the proposed thoroughfare plan. For area four, we are recommending reclassifying Lowe's Boulevard west of Tremere from a marginal access to a local street. Again, on the left is the existing thoroughfare plan and on the right is the proposed. For area five, we're recommending removing the proposed east-west extension of Atkinson Avenue to Ricky Carlisle through the Clean Business Park. So you can see that change here. That change is necessary due to, uh, recent development in the business park. Area six, we are recommending removing the proposed collector connecting East Central Texas Expressway to East Dan Schlueter Loop. Uh, there's a proposed collector that was, uh, it was included on the twenty-fifteen thoroughfare plan and quite frankly, we're just, it, it's, it'll never get developed based on the, the existing development in the area. Area seven, we're recommending reclassifying the east-west connection to Malmaison from a proposed arterial to a proposed collector. Recommending eliminating the proposed east-west connection to Shawlands Drive and recommending realigning the proposed north-south connection between Stage Coach Road and the proposed east-west minor arterial to account for topography. Also recommending eliminating the proposed north-south and east-west collectors from the Preserve at a Thousand Oaks, limiting the proposed north-south and east-west collectors south of Yell Ranch and realigning Chaparral Road to account for the proposed design of the roadway. So you can see those changes here. Again, recommending, um, based on, based on, uh, ongoing development and future proposed development. And for area eight, finally, we're recommending realigning the proposed collector to align with the, with the approved preliminary plat of Reynolds Crossing, in order to minimize impacts to the floodplain. And you can see that change here. With that, staff is, um, staff does find that the proposed amendments are necessary um, to align with recent residential and commercial developments and account for topography. Planning and zoning commission recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Between you and Mr. Zagers, uh, proposed arterial and proposed collector, most people don't even know what that mean. Me and Mr. Cagle went through this for about thirty, I don't know, maybe twenty minutes we went through it. And, and I just wanna, what I, what I need, because this will be one of these campaign points about us trying to do things wrong, thoroughfare, why that is so important to change? Why is, how does that tie into our comprehensive plan? Uh, planning and zoning agree to it and explain and break it down to the simplest form that our residents can understand that Mrs. Messer and her team went through all this work, but there was a reason they proposed this to the council now, please.
Okay, that's, that's a long order there. Um, so when you look at roads and you look at what we call classifications or categories, they're based on how it's being used. So similar to when you look at creeks, rivers, and streams, they're very similar. So when the water comes down, it starts in a creek and it's very slow, lot, not a lot of water. It's very thin, narrow, and then it goes to the brooks and the creeks, they widen based on more water going in. Roads act the same way. You start in the residential streets, you're in your neighborhoods, you have the houses in the driveways and they're going into those local streets. We call those local streets cuz it's where the houses are. And then more, more local streets start interconnecting, they start putting more cars under the road. Well, the road, the next road needs to be wider. So we start dealing with residential collector. You're still in the neighborhood, but everyone's funneling to that main street. And then, when they leave the neighborhoods and more neighborhoods, they connect to a main road. When you start dealing with Featherline, Bunny Trail, they're a main road that has a lot more cars. And you start getting rid of those driveways, but you start putting in the roads and the intersections and, you know, the people, the streets are connecting. So those are gonna be your arterials, your lower level arterials, your collectors. And again, it goes up from there. It goes up to those arterials, which are your main road, Stan Schlueter, those are the big ones where there's multiple lanes. There's a lot of, lot more cars, a lot more traffic, traffic signals, and then eventually leads to the freeways, which are your major arterials. That's the highways, High fourteen, one ninety-five. They handle, they're, they're designed to handle a lot more volume, a lot more traffic and get things going. So our thoroughfare plan is the map of how we assign those name, those, those titles and those classifications to all the city streets. So as development is occurring, as more roads are going and getting built, we have a future plan of where we kinda want these, these main roads to be. There are some that, they're there, there are some that we wanted that never got developed. They weren't built the right way they were, so it could never meet that classification. So rather than say that this is a, this is gonna be an arterial road, but it'll never happen because you have three hundred driveways on it, we can't use that classification. It'll never function, it'll never meet those requirements. So that's what we're trying to do. We're cleaning up our map based on what's out there and then what we can actually build in the future.
That was it. We're going and cleaning up, cuz we already know that cannot be developed with that title. So we're just cleaning up thoroughfare plan. There's nothing hidden. We're just cleaning it up.
Yes. And then we use that, and then we use that for our future planning and as we get, start building in more of our transportation master plans and we start getting some more models and we can do predictability, we kinda have to have those mo, those roads be listed to say the correct way.
Yes, sir. Any questions for the council? Cuz when Mr. Cagle broke it down, cuz I was looking at it from a different perspective, no, that's not what we're saying. And it's simple. The reality of it, these roads was already developed and we. simple. The reality of it, these roads was already developed, and we had already labeled them, but we realize now that it's not going to be completed up to the title that we wanted for, and we just going to have to go clean up and name it what it really is.
Yes, and that's what we're doing.
That's simple. Okay. Thank you so much. Madam Secretary. This is when we take our break? Yes. All righty. We will be taking a five-minute break, and when we come back, we will be doing citizen comments. Thank you all. All right, for time's sake, I'm going to start this council meeting. I have four council members. As we go into citizen comments, if for the ones that was not here earlier, at two o'clock, I did the State of the City. The State of the City is not on this council agenda, so that item will not be discussed during this council member. And if you do discuss that, I will, and Madam Attorney, I will stop you for you to get back on track. And this are for the ones that, this may be your first time here, that what happened at two o'clock is not a part of the three o'clock meeting. That's why we have a separate agenda. And this information can always be found at www.colinetexas.gov. And you can always go up to our city council, hit our council live streaming, and also the agenda. Anything that you might want to know about how this council vote, as I stated before, I say it again, their vote and their discussion up here is for the residents. That's who they answer to according to the charter. Now we're going into citizen comments. For the citizens, this may be your first time here. You have four minutes. And counsel, it states that you have one minute time allotted for city council to respond with a statement or explanation without engaging in dialogue. With that being said, we will start off with James Seals. Seals, James Seals, you have four minutes, sir.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, Mayor Proto.
Sir.
I will, I know it's, you said not to do this, but I, I appreciate your State of the City address. I watched it on TV. I couldn't be here, so I apologize.
We could not talk about that.
I got you. So, you know, I, I would just say, a little less than a year ago, I stood before the P and Z about Featherline, and at that time, I, I think I was the only one there for that, to talk about the impacts of that zoning. And, you know, from there, coming to this council, and, and Councilman Solomon going out to, to Featherline and witnessing the traffic, and then Councilman Solomon and Councilwoman Cobb holding the town hall. So, you know, we've, it's been a progression in that area. We also work with the, the county, a lot of conversations. And now that they're going to improve that area with additional turning lanes, traffic signals at that intersection, an additional turning lane by the high school, and then KISC finally approved the sidewalk between the schools. So, you know, we've worked really hard to improve that area. I do appreciate, you know, what, what you've done to support that and that community. But I, you know, there's still some work to be done. And, and you know, I hope tonight, just between the public hearings, we can discuss those items and make sure that they're captured as we move forward. Thank you.
There's nothing in the governing standards or decorum that says a person has to list exactly which items they're going to discuss. It just says that they have to sign up in order to talk. So when I sign up to talk about the agenda, it means I'm signing up to talk about the agenda. Are you done smiling and, and having fun with people over there?
You owe your time, Ms. Brier.
I am on my time, and you said that you would respect every citizen, which means not having conversations with people in the back. Thanks. As far as all of the grants that we have, anytime that the city can get grants to cut down on what we have to come out of pocket with from any of our fund balances, I think that's a, a great idea. And I think it is awesome. Our Parks Department did a great job in getting us approved for the grants that they have, especially being rated as high as we were for the Long Bridge Park grant. So I want to just express my appreciation for that. As far as, do you need water? Were you just laughing?
That's her time she wasting. Don't, don't.
As far as the Arts Commission rules and regulations, I think there's a, a huge thing that was missed, wasn't really talked about enough, which is eliminating the drawdown prior to the events. So we have some organizations that work on a very, very tight budget. They are approved for the Arts Commission grants prior to starting anything. Hi, people are talking. Thanks. This could be detrimental to their events. A lot of these organizations do count on being able to submit their drawdowns so that they can get that reimbursement, so that they can pay for the next step in the planning process. So I really think that we need to rethink that. I think that the most interesting one right now to me is the financial governance policy, for two reasons. One, because the biggest scandal, if you want to call it that, that the City of Colleen had last year, was due to a breach of security in our IT systems. And one of the recommendations is to allow more people access, to allow more people to have security access. I think that that would be a big mistake. It's the very last recommendation on there. But I also would love to know who's actually running the city and making decisions, because if you look at your presentation, everything is in past tense. Every recommendation is in past tense. Like, this is already something that we've been doing, that we've implemented. Now you are just making the formality vote to put it into place, so that when it comes time for us to actually do our, our annual audit, we're in compliance, right? A recommendation shouldn't be in past tense. Instead of saying removed and replaced, it should just be remove and replace. Otherwise, it's not a recommendation. It's saying, we already did this. So who is exactly running the city? Look, we, we recognize our first responders tonight. That was talked about a lot in the State of the City address. The State of the City address also was used to talk about some of the other... Please pause, because I have a question for the attorney on this one, because that is related to the agenda. I'm talking about the public safety that's on the agenda. Just because it related to the State of the City.
The next person to come up is Cameron.
I'm requesting an extra, I'm requesting an extra minute, please.
Counselor, she's requesting Councilmember Boyd.
No.
Councilmember Segaro. Council, Mayor, no. Councilmember, Councilmember Alvarez. Thank you.
So you just are gonna...
Mr. Cameron Cochran, it is your time to speak. Mr. Cameron Cochran, you have four minutes, sir.
I really didn't plan on speaking tonight, but might as well. First word I'd like to introduce people to is called election engineering. Look it up. The activity of trying to persuade people to vote for a particular person.
Madam, uh, city attorney, is that on the agenda?
Can you stop my time, please? Can you stop my time, please? Can you stop my time, please?
I don't see anything on the agenda regarding the election.
That's called opening remarks. Opening remarks. All right, so then, let's play a drinking game. Every time the mayor mentioned city council, take a drink. You'll be drunk. Every time the mayor mentioned, watch the videos. Well, I've watched those videos. They skip, and there are edits, so there's no transparency. Oh, transparency is the magical word we're talking about tonight. Let's talk about what's on the agenda. KEDC, the Colleen Economic Development Corporation. For the past two years, I, as a citizen, have been trying to get the minutes of the meetings they've held. I guess they're held in private. Also, look at the budget and what that money's been spent for. I've asked the city, and the city said, oh, do they open records? We don't have it. They don't belong to us. I've sent emails to KEDC, and they say, oh, we can't respond to that. Those are private. So tonight, I'm asking for actually, maybe if I get some information on the KEDC records, that'd be wonderful. Wow. Next, let's look at the, uh, support the city has shown towards someone that the KEDC supports, as well as the city. The city granted the National Mounted Warrior Museum $80,000 for five years with no strings attached. When you look at the new, yes, new Visit Colleen Convention and Tourist Bureau, the information that's contained in there says that the museum is currently under Phase One construction, should be open with, somewhere around November of 2023. So the only people who don't know it's open, I guess, are people who are creating a webpage for the Convention and Tourist Bureau. But no, there's more. The U.S. Army website that talks about museums also says the National Mounted Warrior Museum should be open by February 2024. That's what your $80,000 went for, publicized things that show they're closed when they're actually open. Hopefully, you get more people into the National Mounted Warrior Museum very soon. Since I can't talk about things that I want to, let me move forward to Featherline Road. I live out by a place called Levi Crossing. Levi Crossing, in August 2022, the idea was, let's put some homes out there. Let's put 400 homes out there. I can tell you by living next to Levi Crossing, within a matter of two years, they have almost completed about 275 homes. So it's not going to take five years, 10 years, and the make-believe miracle that they keep telling you or trying to sell to you. It only takes about two years. Also, when driving down Featherline, there was a house that was built on that property, but I thought they were supposed to hold up on doing any kind of construction. That house is gone. They're ready. They're moving forward. They don't care about the city and what the city thinks or plans. You keep saying Featherline's on hold. Well, it's really not on hold, because work is being done. Sad, sad. What else can I not talk about? Oh, you say, well, there was only one person who voiced their objection to this latest revelation of building homes. Well, I think there was a petition that was circulated, that I guess you don't like, because you keep disparaging the people who signed that petition, around 335 signatures. Those people actually have to work. They can't be here at three o'clock in the afternoon at each meeting, when this meeting always discusses Featherline and always approves it. Well, I guess tonight, you'll be approving it as well. Approve, approve. That's your motto, isn't it? So sad, so sad. Also, when you go out of town, can you show us some return on investment? So far, I've seen nothing that you brought back to us.
Mr. Sean, Mr. Sean Price, you have four minutes, sir. Counsel, when Mr. Price finished, you will have one minute to comment.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening, sir.
Hopefully, I won't be discriminated against for being me. So RS 25021, right? Why don't we use concrete? Concrete can last up to 60 years. I know it costs more money, but 60 years versus 12 to 15 years. Okay, double the cost, but triple the life. Seems kind of common sense. It's kind of like a Costco buy, right? Without the DEI. 025, we're taking in the money and recouping the money. It's on the, the judge with the collections of all this stuff, realized that it was more beneficial to do it in-house, right? And it would cost us $250,000 to hire three dedicated collection agents. And after all, it's, it's about your desire for control, right? So who is the, who is the attorney to clean for this collection agency, right? Because it's going to be a lawyer that do, that does the, oversees these collections for the city, for the courthouse. 0226 is that, how much are the expected gains on the investments that we're going to put out there? If we're going to invest, what are the gains? And what are those offsets versus our current $17 million interest payments that we got to pay for all the money that we've borrowed? And the, you know, to include the $90 million that we borrowed last year for this year. 0027, is it really required to have perfectly smooth steel? I don't know. I mean, we can warp it. We can weld it. We can cut in the pieces and stuff like that. So I'm just a little bit curious. I have a curious about the, the thing, but I think that, you know, we should invest in that. So I'm going, I'm just wondering what the cost for the upgrade for the, for these services there. What would it cost us as a city to just upgrade it instead of repair it? Because repairing a device that's as old as this might be just beneficial to just upgrade it to a larger or more capable service. It'd actually help out with safety with the newer equipment, since we have fire issues out there. And not only that, with the environmental checks and stuff like that, for the old, old property that we used to own, don't we have records of, since we built stuff on the property already, don't we already have records for a geological survey from the history of city property that we've already owned? Shouldn't that have already been done? So not that this isn't a costing, you know, $70,000 is not that much for an environmental and, and geological survey. It's, that's, that, that seems reasonable. But I'm just saying, should, shouldn't there be a history of it already been done, since we've already owned the property once before? So we could save, probably save some money, right? Cost savings. Yep. So out of all of that, those are my questions that usually never get answered, right? I might have one or two of you answered, but, you know, I'm always hopeful.
So your time is up. Thank you very much.
Always hopeful, yeah.
All right. With that being said, Councilmember Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to bring clarity to a comment relating to KEDC. They're not secret meetings. They're public meetings. There are portions of the meeting where they have to go in closed session, similar to city council, but they are public meetings that can be attended. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, gee, I don't even know where to begin. Councilmember Alvarez, I'm gonna let you go, because I wrote down some comments that I, I gotta go through.
I just wanted to apply, provide a little bit of clarity. One of the residents brought up Levi Crossing. Zoning for Levi Crossing subdivision was submitted in 2017, the plat in 2018. The first home certificate of occupancy wasn't issued until late 2022 and early 2023. So between the zoning case and the first home COO, you're talking about five years. So just wanted to add that point of clarity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To Councilmember Boyd.
I, I feel, I would be remiss if I didn't say this. Coming to this lectern and raising the voice and, you know, punching the lectern and being provocative does nothing to help anyone's case, anyone listening, anyone advocating. It's just, it's not productive, and we're adults here. We're not children. We're not children. So, uh, just a recommendation for those who consistently exercise this behavior. This is a professional business meeting. Your councilmembers are doing our job to maintain our professionalism and we expect the citizens to have that expectation sitting here and watching online. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers. Um, residents at home, um, once again, you can go to www.clean texas.gov. There are a lot of items that's on our agenda. A lot of things have happened surrounding Featherline for those that may not know about the Therafair plan. All of our agenda items are on there and it would behoove you to go and learn for yourself on how this city council vote and why the city staff, uh, make these recommendations and also, uh, the planning and zoning when they make those decisions. So with that being said, if there's no more comments, I just want to say one more thing. I think Councilmember, Councilmember Board did answer about, uh, K E D C, uh, and, um, Mr. Price, some of the stuff you were saying, I, I don't know. But what I did understand, uh, for the maintenance and repair for the transfer station push wall project, um, a fire did occur, uh, that, at the transfer station and, uh, staff went out there and the wall will be, uh, redone, the wall, um, uh, and it has to be used because the staff did an excellent job explaining in detail. I made sure that they made it so simple that anybody can understand what they were saying, especially the residents that may not have the opportunity to attend the meetings and for the ones that'll go back and look at these videos. Uh, and it was in plain terms that it had to happen. It was a fire. They're going to repair it and it, what it does, it pushes the trash down the tunnel and through the tunnel, it goes on a dump truck. So if staff and the experts and engineer went out there and they decided this was the best solution to fix the transfer station, it's not my opinion, it's professional opinion, that's the route that they went. And why they use steel or not, uh, smooth steel, rough steel, I, I didn't know there was a difference, so I cannot answer that question on that one. I just thought steel was steel. And also with the courts, um, uh, Judge Krishner did meet with the finance director, uh, Mrs. Tanglin, and he was a part of that conversation and he agreed that they should outsource. So, uh, and they did state this, staff did right here. All this information has already been out, but I will go back over it because you did ask that question. Uh, Featherline, I think that was already answered by, uh, Councilmember Alvarez. Uh, Mount Warrior Museum, uh, the council did, for the residents at home, the council did invest in that, uh, for, to do the advertisement. I just believe that it's just like planting a tree or, or, or seed for vegetables. You plant it and in the future it will grow. It just opened, just like any business. Once, uh, people learn more about the Mount Warrior Museum, even though we're doing advertisement, we want people to come and be a part of it. It does help the city of Colleen because not only that, we want them to know about the continued history of Fort Hood, now Fort Cabazos. We want to celebrate our men and women in uniform throughout the years. So I would never say anything negative about the Mounted Warrior Museum because it's highlighting men and women, that one percent that put their life on the line for this great nation. I will always support that and so will this council support that. The other thing, point avoided, that's your first warning for disrupting me. The next item, and counsel, if I forgot something, please remind me, uh, formality, I don't even know what that meant. Okay, the things that I could understand, because I do know that our staff did an excellent job. They answered two question, question, how does it benefit the city and how does it benefit the resident? And I know that they did an excellent job at the lowest level, uh, explaining that to everyone. So when the council voted, the residents and the audience and the residents at home would know, but you can always go back to our website online if you want to know in the future, uh, how did they vote. With that being said, Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also was asked about the about environmental testing. Why do we, um, test, why we have to test?
Yes, sir. He, did you want to answer or you want me to?
You can.
Yes, sir. He made it clear. Over the years, it's just like my house right now. I have a home and, and when they did the study, they did do the study to build my home and I own my home. I don't own anything on it. But also I do know that anything could be out there, could be, uh, I could have went out there, I dialed it, but just hypothetically, I was out there working on my car, which you probably shouldn't be doing, or oil spilled in the back of the yard. It could be anything that could happen over, I've been in there almost over twenty-some years. So if you're going to put some money and invest in something, you're going to go out there and make sure that you can build on it. Anybody that's going to invest that kind of money, the common sense, I am going to go out there and see the environmental side of it. That's just doing business. And I think you have to be in that business world that know that if I'm going to invest in some requirements by the state, there's requirements by the city, the ordinance, you're going to make sure that you can build on it. All right. But staff did do an excellent job and I not, cannot reiterate the job that they did at this podium, explaining in detail why that decision was made. With that being said, we will go into our regular session. Counsel, you have three minutes each to speak for three minutes. Concern agenda, uh, Madam Secretary, and also, um, there was an item, Councilmember Protem. I don't know if y'all gonna, you, Councilman Segarra received that information, but when we get there, it'll be your decision if you're going to pull that item or we moving forward. Madam Secretary.
M N twenty-five zero zero four, M N twenty-five zero zero five, R S twenty-five zero two one, R S twenty-five zero two two, R S twenty-five zero two three, R S twenty-five zero two four, R S twenty-five zero two five, R S twenty-five zero two six, R S twenty-five zero two seven, and R S twenty-five zero two eight.
Thank you for that, Madam Secretary. Uh, Mayor Protem, a motion and it was an item, are you moving it or not, tabling it? I'm sorry.
You're good. Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm good to go on this one. So, um, we've got a motion to approve.
Um, for the considering.
Consider agenda, yes, ma'am.
All right, Councilman Solomon.
Second it, Madam Mayor.
All in favor, yes. The motion carries six to zero with Councilmember Adams absent. We will now go into our public hearing. Counsel, you have three times to speak for three minutes each. Madam Secretary.
P H twenty-five zero zero five, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance requested by Jim Wright on behalf of Doyle Struve, case number Z twenty-four thirty-four, to rezone approximately four point five eight four acres, being part of Lot Nine, Block One, out of the Southwest Crossing addition from R One Single Family Residential District to B Two Local Retail District. The subject property is locally addressed as eight zero five eight Tremere Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately four point five eight four acres, part of Lot Nine, Block One, out of Southwest Crossing from R One Single Family Residential District to B Two Local Retail District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
That I'm recovering from a cold. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mrs. Messner went through, uh, just went through the slides. Are there any questions of her? All right. Is, would the applicant like to speak? Any questions? All righty. Public hearing is open.
Again, City Council, hopefully I don't get too much disdain. I have basically two questions for this because this is in a residential neighborhood area, right? Now we're bringing in healthcare services, but we're bringing in what is concerned, uh, considered, um, a special category element, which is mentally ill people, right? So we're having psychology, psychiatry brought into a residential area or close to it, according to our zoning laws, right? So my question is, is will severely ill, mentally ill specifically, be taken care of since this is a probable occupation of mental services, right? Mental health services. So, and then the second thing is, is what is the actual occupancy? How many patients and how many doctors will be actually doing this? So what is the frequency and the number of onsite personnel will be there in this category? Colleen is notorious for having issues with mentally ill people doing mass, uh, mass, you know, mass murder. Um, so that's my, that, that's the two questions I have and that's the reason why I asked the question I asked and why, you know, why does, why would, does it really absolutely need to be at this location? Why can't it be at the, uh, uh, our medical complex areas? We have two of them now. So we have Seaton area and we have, um, Metroplex, you know? They do have, um, doctor offices there, so, and they know how to handle the people and their, and their security services know how to handle situations with mentally ill people because there's a lot of different trigger factors.
Mr. Price, this is a rezoning item. It's not about, it's, it's not about.
We're rezoning this or a mental health hospital or a mental health.
It's, it's not about who's inside, who's not. It's just rezoning.
We're rezoning what?
The Madam Sec, Madam Attorney just told me you're off the subject and, and.
How am I off the subject when?
It's about rezoning. Regardless of what somebody say going on there, it's, it's irrelevant. What we're focused on is rezoning. I can say a moon pie going on there, but I can't talk about a moon pie because this is a rezoning item.
All right, well, I've already made my statement, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so those were my concerns with this particular element because it was spoken to, right? So when it's actually spoken, that's what I'm trying to address, right? So the only other thing is, is that do we need more B two in a, in an R one? Do we need to beef it up, put more? I mean, I just don't understand why we're taking neighborhood areas, right? And we're putting businesses in the middle of the neighborhoods, kind of like corner stores. We got a thousand of them, you know? We got a thousand, you know, of fifty, over fifty car washes in neighborhoods. Why do we have to overoccupy neighborhoods? Can't we just leave them as a neighborhood? Thank you.
Public hearing closed. It's just a reminder, counsel, this is rezoning regardless of what's going on and this is a rezoning item. Councilmember Board.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if I want to speak, uh, because I'm not sure if I'd be on the agenda or not.
This has to only be on rezoning.
Sure. I'll, I'll defer to the next person. Thank you.
And when I say rezoning, you can say, yes, we don't want this type of zoning over there, but the bottom line, and I'm not telling you how to vote, but if you go in that area, if you did a recon, you'll know that there are gas stations, there are businesses in that area. So Councilmember Board, would you like to speak if not, Councilman Segarra do?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I'll be on the agenda. The zoning classification does provide for such use, which would be a psychiatrist's office, which is suggested in the legislative text, right? And I can also understand that there are issues where folks need space. We acknowledge in our community that we have folks that, just like every other community, have mental health, um, issues that need to be addressed. So, um, that's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Segar.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve P H twenty-five dash zero zero five.
Thank you. Councilmember Solomon. All in favor, yes. Motion carries six to zero. Councilmember Adams is out of town.
P H twenty-five zero zero six, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance approving a city-initiated request, case number Z twenty-four thirty-five, to rezone approximately four point six one three acres out of the J H Lewis survey, abstract number five three six, terminal parcels one, two, and three, from A Agricultural District to B Three Local Business District. The subject property is generally located southwest of the intersection of Chet Edwards Loop and South Clear Creek Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately four point six one three acres of the J H Lewis survey, abstract number five three six, terminal parcels one, two, and three, from A Agricultural District to B Three Local Business District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, the staff has, um, have gone over the slide deck. Would you like for Mrs. Messer to go back through it? Nope, all righty then. So, public hearing, who do we have? So we only have one person is to speak on public hearing. If I'm wrong, let me know. And that person, public hearing is open.
I'm back, even though that you don't like to see me. So I've asked this question before, right? On three other occasions, and I've never gotten an answer from anyone, even when I catch anybody off the, off the dais. How much aggregation, uh, agricultural land does Clean have? And how much of it is expendable, right? So I, I'm just curious, you know? Do we use the agricultural land or not? If we don't use it, then why do we even have it as a nomenclature? I mean, efficiency can happen, right? But we're removing agricultural land. Is, do we move it back and forth? Can we just arbitrarily, oh, well, we're just going to change it back to something because now we need it? Is that what we're going to do? I'm just saying, it, it seems by this city council, right? Y'all are really ready, uh, ready to remove agricultural land. It's just easy, just done, just not even thought of, right? I mean, there's a reason why it's there to me, right? So I'm just wondering why we take every little bit and we turn it into something else and then it sits there, you know? I'm, I'm just, that's my question there. Um, because I don't see why we, uh, why we waste it, right? Why we waste the agricultural land? We need eggs. Why we, why can't we invite a farmer up here to put an egg ranch, chicken ranch? Just saying. Go ahead and turn it out and turn it into a business or build more houses, you know? It just makes y'all look more conspicuous about, you know, since you're realtors and developers and something like that, you know, y'all are all in real estate primarily, right? It just draws to question. That's just, that's just what I'm saying. Let's try to avoid all that, all that stuff. Let's just bring it back, you know? Think about it. That's what I got to say because I think there's a need for agricultural land in our city, especially if we have it already, you know? We should have a concern about losing it. You know, we should have a concern about losing it. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Price. I wanted to provide a little more clarity on what you just said. You know, you implied by your comments that the city is going around trying to rezone agriculturally zoned properties. These requests are initiated by the property owner. They are asking us to rezone their property. We're not saying we want to rezone it. They are asking for it. So, it's not the city that's initiating the request. Okay, and because it's agricultural doesn't, doesn't mean that there's active ranching or farming happening there at this property. Have you ever driven by it? I mean, so, that's.
Councilmember Board.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to point out that, um, never mind.
Councilmember Sagard.
Did you close the public hearing, Mayor?
Yes, sir. If I didn't, let me do it again.
All right.
Public hearing closed.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve PH 25-006.
Councilmember Board.
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries six to zero. Councilmember Adams is absent. Madam Secretary.
PH 25-007. Hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance approving a request submitted by TCG Engineering LLC on behalf of GWC Holdings LLC, case number Z 2436, to rezone approximately 107.6 acres out of the WH Cole 2 survey, abstract number 200, from A agricultural district to R1 single-family residential district and B3 local business district. The subject property is locally addressed as 8390 Featherline Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately 107.6 acres out of the WH Cole survey, abstract number 200, from A agricultural district to R1 single-family residential district and B3 local business district, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam City Secretary. Council, staff have gone through the slides. Would you like for Mrs. Mesher to go back through it? All right. Sorry about that. I was reading the note. Is the applicant here? If so, would he or she like to say anything before we move forward? Sir, please state your name for the record.
Garrett Nordike, TCG Engineering. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today about this land use request. During the last 10 months, we have discussed citizen concerns, capacity of existing infrastructure, consistency with the surrounding land uses, compliance with Colleen's comprehensive plan, and the build-out schedule. Mr. Steve Kanye met with citizens having water pressure concerns. Colleen's Public Works Department tested the water system pressures at several points of interest. These tests showed that the City of Colleen's water system performed in compliance with TCEQ. And Mr. Kanye reminded concerned citizens that the subject property will receive water from a different pressure plant than from Yal Ranch. Mr. Andrew Zagars presented Colleen's City Council with the Rules from Colleen's Drainage Criteria in Design Manual, specifically identifying the rules that require runoff mitigation and FEMA permits necessary for making improvements within a FEMA-designated flood hazard area. Mr. Zagars stated, "These are regulations that developers must satisfy, and that compliance is reviewed by Colleen's Engineering Department during subsequent permitting stages." Mr. Edwin Revel and Ms. Wallace Mesher have given detailed presentations to the council about Colleen's comprehensive plan, the positive economic impact of the development on the City of Colleen, and that the requested land use is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Bell County retained an engineering firm to perform a traffic study of the intersection of Chaparral Road and Featherline Road. Subsequently, the intersection was reconfigured to an always-stop, and the, the traffic study findings were presented to the City of Colleen. And finally, the Colleen City Council, you guys, prioritized the design of the reconstruction of Featherline Road. The configuration of Featherline Road shall be two lanes with a two-way turn lane that will improve both through mobility and intersection performance. If this zoning request is successful, we expect design and engineering to take over one year, probably closer to a year and a half. The first, that there are several stages in permitting with the engineering. First is the preliminary plat. We'll submit the preliminary plat. It will have to run its course through planning and zoning and the city council. After we receive preliminary plat approval, then we'll begin work on construction plans. Construction plans will take an additional six to nine months. So, before construction of the roads can even start, it will take another year to year and a half of permitting. Once construction begins, construction's going to take between one and one and a half years to do the first of three to four phases. At that point, in another three years, then the first house can begin construction. A house will take another six to nine months to construct. So, it will be approximately three to four years before there's anyone living in the subdivision. It takes time. This will not happen overnight, and we will, the developer and the contractor will have to work in concert with the city to, during Featherline Road improvements, not just because we want to, but because we have to. We're, this is our only point of access, so we're going to have to work with the City of Colleen for those improvements. For the last 20 years, the, the community has relied on a comprehensive plan that contemplated this land being developed as requested. The City of Colleen extended wastewater interceptors to Featherline Road, extended water transmission lines along Chaparral, and invested $22 million in a police headquarters. The Colleen Independent School District invested another $225 million in both a high school and a middle school. Developing this land will provide one of the highest tax-producing developments in the City of Colleen. We believe this will be a great addition to the City of Colleen, and we thank the staff for their support and their efforts to address concerns. Again, thank you for your time and your consideration.
Would you like to say something before I open up for public hearing?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmember, City Manager. Thank you for your efforts to move our city forward. There's a lot of great things going on. A lot of that was revealed today, and I applaud you for that. Over the last year, there's been a lot of things that have went on related to this project. There's been public hearings. Ms. Cobb and Mr. Solomon have had these public hearings. A lot of information from the public, and y'all have reacted admirably. A lot of things have already taken place, and a lot of things are currently taking place to resolve some of the traffic, off-site traffic issues that are generated mostly because of the schools. But a lot of things have taken place, the right turn lane at the intersection, stop signs. I think the school district's working on sidewalks. And now you have, the main concern with Featherline Road is underdesign, and you've already identified the funding mechanism to, to construct it. And so, I applaud you for everything that you've done. This is a good project, and I encourage you or I ask you to please approve this project, and thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Public hearing is open. Melissa Brown. You have four minutes.
With differing definitions of respect, so next time I'll just say point of order. If you have questions about what happened at the planning and zoning meeting, you can go to www.colinetexas.gov, go to City Council, then live streams, and you can watch the P and Z meetings that have been recorded and are posted there. And so, if council members or the mayor can't make it to the meeting, and you're curious about why they decided to support or not support something or what the citizens had to say, or if anyone on TV or here in the room that wasn't at the meeting would like to know what they had to say, then go ahead and check it out on the website. There was only one response because people have already responded. The first time came up almost a year ago when they submitted all of their responses back to the city. And again, just a couple of months ago, when they signed a petition that some city council members want to deny, petition deniers. Tonight, staff confirmed what citizens have been saying, that housing could be built and be done before the road is done. Mr. Zagars said, "We can't guarantee that the road will be finished first because you can't." There was a, there was a comment made by a person representing this who said that it's going to take a long time because plating is going to have to go to P and Z and then to the council, and apparently, they haven't done much work in the City of Colleen. Because it doesn't go to either of those anymore, it is directly decided on by staff members now. It's quick. It was done specifically to speed up the process. So, talking about the process taking a long time is pretty much irrelevant because it has taken a bunch of time off, which is why you delegated that away from every body and put it into a single person's hands. We have to be forward-thinking. Yal Ranch is expanding again. Thousand Oaks is being built. Houses are being sold in Turbo Ranch. Forward-thinking would take this into account and have to foresight the mayor address, the city, state of the city address, to postpone this until infrastructure is done. To continue to imply and straight-up say that citizens are ignorant and they don't understand just because they disagree, that's more than insulting. That's not respectful. We understand. I may not have a degree in this, but I'll tell you what, neither do some of the staff members. Seeing their resumes, they don't have degrees in this either. There's no guarantee that this will produce high tax revenue, given the exemptions that are available, which is why our comp plan said, "Stop building a bunch of R1 developments." So, let's ignore that part of it because it's just, it's a, it's a living document, right? We change it as we want to. The, the single ingress egress, what you're about to do is intentionally build another Alamosito situation. That's, that's one of the primary issues in Alamositos. That's what you're about to do here when you put 600 houses with one ingress egress going out to the road. And then your next item actually takes away a connector between those, between two roads. So, we're going to make it worse. Water pressure testing was done when there was only one school. It was not peak usage, and the schools weren't in session or watering their fields. People don't have to have a degree to know when they turn on their faucet whether their water pressure is high or low. When they go to get in the shower and the water pressure is low, they know it because they live it. I talked to several hundred of them that signed petitions against you.
Mr. Price. Council, hold your comments till they finish. Mr. Price, you have four minutes, sir.
I'm back again, right? Tried to smile about this, but I understand the hate and disdain for me. So, I'm just going to echo the same thing that Mrs. Brown stated with this is egress ingress, right? We already had that issue with having to retrofit an entire neighborhood off a bunny trail with building another road. Not only that, everybody seems to forget that there's a hazmat battery storage facility out there that's going to be on that corner, right? If it catches fire, which the factory in California actually is still burning right now, and that's been over a month, right? It's emitting cyanide gas. They had to evacuate the entire neighborhood. So, you know, y'all's planning to put that there right next to all these new homes, next to the high school, next to the police department. We're going to have to evacuate a jail, all this other stuff when these things occur, and they do occur, and they often occur. You can look at the National Registry for this battle, battery storage stuff, and it's going to be right here where you're going to re-change this zone, right? But are you going to make it effective to a hazmat area? Just, you know, and I see is, with these additional homes and with the planned additional homes, that Featherline Road that you're going to reconstruct, you're doing it to right-now standards, not to the future standards with all the upgrades for all the other homes that you're putting in there. So, that I don't even see anybody talking about. You're going to need a four-lane highway out there with the number of homes, but you're going to have only a three-lane and one in and out. So, yeah, you create a mess. You create a safety hazard with fire and safety, right? What happens if the area becomes primarily seniors or disabled vets? Ambulances can't get in and out of there when, you know, during peak times. So, there's a lot of things that are failed to look in on this, on this thing here for me because I'm just like, it's repeating. We're seeing this repeated over and over and over and over again in a city since I've been here since 2005. I've seen this occur four other times with a lot of different little neighborhoods. And now, it's going to be an HOA because every neighborhood is an HOA, right? And then with concrete walls, you know, you got cell block, I call them, you know, communist cell block centers. That's just my, you know, that's what I call it because I don't like that type of stuff. I believe in traditional American neighborhoods, open, beautiful. You know what I mean? Cut yards, landscape. But with this rezoning of this property, again, we're going from agriculture. We're ripping out the agricultural areas. You know, I'm just like, okay, let's put in a whole bunch of other little homes that may or may not be foreclosed here in the next year or two. Let's hope for prosperity. Let's hope that it actually happens. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Seal, you have four minutes, sir.
I just have a quick something.
Oops, ma'am, he's coming now. No, just wait till he finish. I already called him. Sir, you have four minutes.
Good evening again. I'm just tired, you know? I'll be honest. I think Mr. Kasper can agree. Again, I started this, it was just a fight for this community. It's a wonderful community, and we recognize something that we just didn't feel was right. And we voiced our concerns as a, as a community and brought this forward. You know, tonight, I don't, you know, I'm confident in the way this will go. I'm at peace with that. I think, you know, I've harped on the P and Z, and, and, you know, they agreed for this tonight. And I'm not going to be a hypocrite. I've asked you to always respect how they vote, and I'm not going to change that right now. And, you know, you've done just about everything we've asked you to do. And so, I mean, the roads there, the, the water line. Mr. Zagars is working on the well-in to get drainage accounted for. You know, I don't, I don't know what else I could say to that. know what else I could say to that extent, you know, but I just really do hope. And I've also talked to Mr. Cosper and Mr. Nordike, you know, and they've, they've worked with the residents on the well-in, and so there are some things that they're going to try to do to make this amenable as possible, being good neighbors about this. So, you know, I just, I think that was the hope from the beginning. And, you know, so I applaud all of you for taking that time and listening to us. You know, it's, it took a lot for all of us to do what we did up here. You know, a lot of the community to stand up and fight for what we thought was right. So, you know, the journey was not easy. You know, I think we've, we've taken a lot of criticism. I think we've put out a lot of criticism. But at the end of the day, I mean, we're here. We always knew that that land would be approved for homes, so we were able to maximize that. But outside of that, you know, I, I just appreciate that. I don't want 300 homes behind me, I'm not going to lie to you. But at the same time, it's not my land, right? They want to build homes, that's up to them. So, again, thank you. Thank you for everything. You know, Councilman Solomon, Councilwoman Cobb especially, you've done a lot for us out there. And I appreciate Mr. Cosper, Mr. Nordike for working with us too. So I just ask that in the future, you continue to, you know, as respectful as we've been, just please repay that. We've always tried to make sure we brought what we could forward in the most respectful way. So just as citizens come here with other areas, there's a lot of Federlines that we've said before, I just ask that you, you treat them the same, and really listen and investigate and take that time with them. All right? Thank you.
Sir, I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
You brought this to the council. You brought this to the council. And I'm trying to understand. Did you say that you agree with planning and zoning, and that you made peace with the council voting to move this forward? Did I understand that? Because somebody a hypocrite. I missed, you just threw it all together.
Yeah, so before, you know, the, the planning and zoning is disapproved. The, the whole 600 homes, the 195 acres, then they disapproved the 80 acres. And we, we kept saying, you know, listen to the planning and zoning, they're disapproving it, you should be disapproving it. And because we've, you know, me personally, I've said this a lot. The planning and zoning is the closest thing to the citizens that we get, right? They, they take the revenue money out of it, and they just look at land and what the impacts are around it. And so to me, I've always felt like how they vote represented us very well. And so they approved this. And I'm not going to be hypocritical and say that I don't like the way they voted. That's not right. I, I, I agreed with them when they said no. I'm not going to sit here and disagree with them when they say yes, right? So they, they approved this. I'm not going to tell you to approve it, but at the same time, I respect their decision, and I'll respect your decision tonight.
Yeah, because on planning and zoning, they have developers and builders too, realtors too. It's just, it's both ways. That's one thing. And my other question, something that I have for you, because you did bring this. This is, this is yours. You brought it, and I commend you when you came up here and you made the statement. Their staff came out there, they looked at the water, because of the water pressure. You stood there with them. They, they tested the water pressure and all this well. And see, I, when you, and what people don't understand, I talked to Mr. Seale's off-record. We have conversations because I have the utmost respect for him. He has the utmost respect for me. And, and we have always been honest and with each other, how we felt on things. And I respect that about you. And for you to come here, you brought it, the petition, the KDH hadn't seen the signatures, and the city hadn't seen the signatures, and you can confirm that. So that's just something somebody threw out there, because we hadn't seen it. If people really, the numbers that's out there in the paper, nobody have seen it.
Oh, I turned them in, but I got you.
But we have, no, not them, I'm talking about this recent one.
Understood.
We, we, it's no compromise, it can't be confirmed. And until the, the KDH can see it, I'm assuming, you can confirm it. But right now, that's just people just throwing stuff in the atmosphere. And that's what we do a lot of, but I can respect you when you come up here, and you the one going through it, and you led it, and you can come here as a leader in that area, running that petition. You, you can come up and say, "Hey, guys, thank you. Thank you for that." I have the utmost respect for you. Thank you, thank you. That took a lot. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. Is anybody else that signed up for public hearing? Because I don't have anybody else. Mr. Cagle, you would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am, just to answer the question.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Oh, you can go ahead on, because we still got, is it anybody else before I close it? All right, public hearing closed. Mr. Cagle.
Agricultural zoning is meant to be a holding category. It was never meant to be a zoning inside the city that was going to be wheat fields and cattle pastures forever. When, when land's brought into the city, it's almost always brought in under agricultural zoning, knowing that it's going to change to something else. Now, typically, you'll see people inside the city perhaps still farming land because they want to keep their ag exemption. That makes sense. It's not that the city is asking for a piece of land to be farmed forever. In fact, it's just quite the opposite expected. You're inside the city limits, you're going to develop into something different at some point in the future. And as far as Federline Road, yes, it does take into account full build-out. And quite often, a three-lane road will handle much more traffic, much more efficiently than a four-lane road. As far as the plats, yes, those are, those are done by staff now because it's a ministerial duty. You have to approve them if they meet all the criteria. That saves weeks, not years. The timeline that the gentleman gave is still accurate, and I still believe a Federline will be finished before the first person moves in out there. And I believe that covers it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want one more clarification before I go to you, Councilwoman Cobb. The council, if you notice, and I'm talking to the residents that's new here and the residents at home, we don't attack people. We're being attacked. And the people that attack us, I can only speak for me, they just don't look like me. So I don't want people to get the perception that we're racist in any kind of way, because we're not. Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry, was Councilmember Cobb supposed to speak prior to me?
Councilwoman Cobb.
That's fine.
Well, I wanted to respond to a comment that said that of the disdain and the dislike that we have for anyone. I have no disdain or dislike for anyone. I had a purpose when I became a councilwoman, and that was to be honest, to be fair, and to be just. And every time I walk in those doors, that's what I practice. So there's no disdain or dishonesty. Every person that comes in here has the right to speak and make their comments. Mr. Price, please don't think that when you get up, there's a disdain or something ugly going on, because that is something, this was not in reference to Federline. That was my third minutes after the speaker. You know, I get three minutes. So I just wanted to make sure that every constituent and every person that comes through those doors and make their statements know that it's done of that. And you know what? A positive always equals a positive. What is right will be right in the beginning, and it will be right in the end, no matter what someone says.
Thank you. I just want to confirm that the public hearing was closed. Very good. Understanding, or acknowledging, rather, all that has been done to address Federline since the inception of the issue that was, that was found and acknowledged. I'm not going to belabor this. I'm going to make a motion to approve, sorry, let me back up. I, Councilman Michael Boyd, make a motion to approve PH-25-007.
Okay. Councilmember Protem. Oh, who is that? Councilmember Segar.
I'll second it. Can I make a comment, though?
Yes, sir.
So I got a second on it, so. But I just want to say, you know, Mr. Seale, he made those comments, but he moved the city in a direction that we weren't looking. It wasn't in our radar to improve Federline. So a lot of good outcome come out of this. So I don't think that, you know, from my recollection, I don't think that Federline was in, in, in our radar to be expanded and be repaired soon. And now we, we took out a bond, we're doing it, we're going to fix it, and we're going to fix it before we build those homes. So I just want to commend you for taking an active role and, and, you know, doing something, you know. So thank you. Appreciate that.
I agree with that. That is a positive. Mayor Protem.
Again, yes, ma'am, I don't want to belabor the point, but I do just want to say this, that I do firmly agree with everything that you just said. Councilmember Segar, it was a masterclass in how civil discourse works. Whether we like it or not, the process worked. The citizens spoke. We heard. We went out. We listened. We evaluated. And so it was just, it was a masterclass in how things can get done without the negative, you know, introspection. It was just very, it was very thorough, it was very thoughtful on all sides. So again, it was just a masterclass of how this should, should be done. Thank you.
Thank you. And one more thing before I call for the vote. Councilmember Solomon. Councilwoman Cobb.
Thank you. You know, we always hear that the residents speak and nobody listen. You two were the main ones that would not vote for it the first time around. They can't say that. There's nothing that the two of you did wrong. And you had Mr. Seale, that's who matters, his opinion. He was the one that started the petition. And he came before us and said, "Thank you." Y'all have done everything y'all possibly could. And it took a lot, it took a lot to stand to, to say no. And I want to personally thank you. He has already thanked you for that. And I agree with Mayor Protem. This is when a citizen brings something, and they work with the city to come up with a solution and not attack and do it in a professional manner. These are the positive results you get in return. With that being said, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no.
The vote passes. Five. Who's being ruled? Please be respectful. Five to one with Councilwoman Cobb in opposition. Motion carries. All right, our last item. We have more people? Madam Secretary.
PH-25008, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the City of Killeen Thoroughfare Plan. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan to update the thoroughfare plan, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you. Counselor staff went through the slides. Would you like for them to go back through it? Okay. All right, public hearing. Cameron Cochran, four minutes.
Did you get the handouts I gave you for, over here, by the way? Did you get the handouts? Guess not. I just want to clarify, you implied by your comments earlier that I spoke some type of disparaging words about the National Mounted Warrior Museum.
Sir, we are no longer on that item. We are on PH-25-008. Please stay on the agenda item.
I'm just trying to clarify something.
Sir, please stay on PH-25-008. You've been here enough to know. Please continue.
Thank you for telling me how long I've been here. Two years, yes. I think you're misleading folks when you tell them that I disparaged the National Mounted Warrior Museum. I was speaking about the advertising.
Sir, if you continue to go on, I am going to ask you, sir, thank you. Please take your seat, because you're not going to stay off the agenda. You are on PH-25-008. That's your first one, and please get back on the agenda, sir. Please get on the agenda. Brown, that's your first one.
Don't cry. I'm leaving.
Sir, stay under the agenda.
Have a nice night.
Thank you. Next person, for the sake of respect, we have Melissa Brown. Your time. You have four minutes.
One team. That's what we keep hearing, one team. So if one is attacked, everyone's attacked. One shows disdain, you all show disdain.
Please get on the agenda, PH-25-008, please.
You're allowed someone else to talk about that same topic.
Please get on the agenda, PH-25-008, please.
Noted. No consistency. Good. At planning and zoning, this was actually announced as a comprehensive plan change, not a thoroughfare plan change. As a matter of fact, the commissioners asked a question about that and why they were seeing it first, and we didn't go through the whole process. If thoroughfare plan changes, they were so old wealth because it's not thoroughfare. It's a comprehensive plan change. Shows up on your agenda, and it says thoroughfare plan change. So reclassifying of Mohawk reduces the, the work and therefore the cost required by the developer that later on the city will have to pay for to be improved. So changing it to your proposed arterial means that it can be built at a residential width, which is 31 feet of road, 100 feet of right-of-way, of right-of-way, instead of somewhere between 48 to 73 feet worth of road width. Was I interrupting you? Area six is just going to put more, push more people through the parking lots because the traffic over there on Stan Schlotter going back and forth to the highway and the access road is not going to get any less. So having another connector there would be good. Removing it doesn't make sense. Eliminating roads in Thousand Oaks eliminates connections, ingress/egress connectivity, big word from our comprehensive plan, and limits emergency service access, something that, at 2 o'clock, the mayor said we support. Reynolds Crossing is the one that actually makes the most sense because it just redirects it to limit a flood plane. I don't see why we wouldn't do that. Mel Mason, proposed arterial to a proposed collector makes the road smaller and cheaper than the current plans. And again, that makes it proposed, which means it doesn't have to be built to those standards. And last time I was told that I didn't know what I was talking about this, I was right, because I said there wasn't going to be sidewalks at the apartment on Illinois, and there's no sidewalks there. So I kind of do know what I'm talking about, even without a degree. Removing the connector to Shawlands removes an important ingress and egress from property or connector way to get around it. In an area that you just approved a total of 600 houses on, the best part is I wrote this like two hours ago. How'd I know you're going to pass it? Removing collectors at Yalla again limits roads for traffic and access for emergency services. Maps have no street names. Before today, there hasn't been an explanation about the, to the public on large about road definitions. Thoroughfare plans usually have public input, public town halls, suggestions, questions, and most importantly, dialogue. Changes to comp plans should be done the same way, since these are all the public's documents. The mayor said at 2 o'clock that y'all work for us, so road plans have the high turnout.
We're not on the state of the city.
And you should do more public outreach before you change any thoroughfare plans. I'm on topic because I'm talking about the thoroughfare changes. This isn't about campaigning for those folks. This isn't about campaigning for those folks.
Next person, Sean Price. And for the record, Mr. Seals, that brought the petition. He agreed that he didn't have a problem with it going forward. Mr. Price. Four minutes, sir, no, I didn't.
Just making sure, because I don't like, I don't like you putting words in my mouth. Because you know I don't like you. So, what, I'm just telling the truth?
So you have four minutes. Let's get back on that topic. And the topic is PH-25-008.
Could you repeat and tell me what the nomenclature is for that?
Yes, sir. It's PH-25-008. It's a hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the City of Colleen thoroughfare plan.
Is it fair for my time to continue while you speak?
You asked me a question and I answered it. Please continue.
I'm just asking about my time, that's all. Just clarification thing, right? So thorough, does this include the upgrades to Ransier Road? The plan to spend $11 million to that? Or was that omitted? Or is that just forgotten to be part of this plan? Because is it not a throughway, Ransier Road? So I'm just wondering, you know, if we're talking about all these additions and takeaways and changes, right? Why aren't we being comprehensive in that, right? Why it doesn't include all the expenditures and all the plans for all the roads that we got going on? I'm just a little confused with what the priority of explaining these categories and these nomenclatures, right? Because we try to talk about something and we get slam and ham, right? And to me, I think it's because, right here. I think it's because I'm white, okay? And that comes from you, Madam Mayor, specifically.
Mr. Price.
Just to address Ms. Cobb, because she spoke and invoked my name.
Ma'am, stop the, stop the clock, please, please. Mr. Price.
Madam Mayor.
You are talking on PH-25-008.
Yes, I am.
The council do not have anything against you, period.
I don't believe that.
Let's just stop, let's just stop this.
You've given me no evidence of that.
Let's just focus on the agenda item, please. That's all I'm asking for.
Your hate and disdain towards folks like me is prevalent.
Madam Secretary, start the clock, please. Stay on topic, PH-25-008.
Because this is an all minority city council, so I'm excluded automatically. So that's why there's disdain.
Please continue.
Yeah. So why are these inclusions not there? Why is it forgotten? What is the thought process that goes behind doing these actual projects? Because it costs us money to produce this stuff. We look for you as arbiters of our money. You're taking it from us to spend it on the things that we need, yes. But as we can see, $35 trillion in debt and ARPA funds from President Biden, you know, that still adds to our, the cost. And doing this right here, right? We want to know where the money is being spent and how it's being spent with these additions and subtractions to these specific plans, which affects our daily life, moving around in the city, which is a throughway. And we're spending money, you know, $11 million for Ransier. I think it's a great idea. I think it's money well spent. But then we're forgetting about Featherline Road and adding an addition and putting another neighborhood in with only one in and one out. That's a throughway. I'm just saying. And then we're thinking about all these roads with their asphalt. That's oil. How about, where's the green in that? How about putting the concrete down there and investing in roads that last for, you know, up to 60 years, depending upon its chemistry? That's the way I look at it. Think about it. If we're gonna spend the money, and we're gonna spend a lot of money, and we have to keep spending more and more money because it costs more and more down the road, yeah? Then think forward.
Thank you. I just want to read something before we go forward. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the comprehensive plan to update the thoroughfare plan, providing a severability clause, providing a saving clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date." And the only thing about this thoroughfare plan, staff made it so clear. But Mr. Kegel, please.
Yes, ma'am. Ransier's not included because it's appropriately identified in the thoroughfare plan. There's no need to change it. It may be being rebuilt, but it's identified appropriately right now in the thoroughfare plan. So there was no reason to include it.
Yes, sir, enough, nor Featherline.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
We have one more person, and that's Gary Persa. Do you want to go before him or out? Okay. Sir, you have four minutes.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm in agreeance we need to update thoroughfare plan. And I want to say that twice. I'm in agreeance that we ought to update thoroughfare plan every so often, right? Now where I'm in disagreement is the process of what we're doing. Earlier, we heard that this is pretty simple. This is not pretty simple. And that's where I disagree with the process. Because the thoroughfare, the way y'all designate streets has to do with the street design. The street design will be different than a residential street. That could, that's a lot of money. How you designate your thoroughfare has to do with this new ordinance y'all just passed on the fence. It's a lot of money. We're talking a lot, a lot of money. So it's not that simple when you roll the page back or the pages back and look at what you're really voting on. You're really voting on millions of dollars worth of stuff. For the third time, I agree it ought to be updated. But I don't agree with updating things and pushing things through before we know what's really going on, before we peel the paper back a little. I know in the old days that the city, I've done many, many thoroughfares, and the city had city developer participation. And y'all participated. And it also has to do with drainage. The classification of that street has to do with drainage and how we have to handle drainage. Drainage costs more than water and sewer combined. It's very, very expensive. So there's a lot going on here. It's not real simple when you, when you dig down into the depth of it. Y'all used to have city developer agreements. Y'all paid for the oversize. Y'all paid for engineering costs. Y'all paid for 12-foot a street. We always built 36-foot. Y'all ordered them 48. Y'all paid for 12-foot. Y'all paid for some of the engineering costs, pro-rated share. Y'all paid for, we paid for 100% of 36. Y'all paid for extra what y'all asked for. I have no idea what you pay for now, if anything. I think city developer agreements have pretty well disappeared. I know I built Platinum. It's a 48-foot thoroughfare. Now it's not a thoroughfare. That's fine, I don't really care. Because I can show y'all, and I don't have time to show you, tell you everything, but y'all have paid me to build thoroughfares. And I've came down to the public works and said, "This is ludicrous." It's, you're wasting your money. And I can show y'all later date if y'all wanted to see them. But I am for changing them. I'm for looking at them. I'm for upgrading them. But I'm not liking the process because I don't think we peel the paper back far enough to understand what we're really talking about and who's gonna pay for it. And it does affect drainage. It affects this fence ordinance. And it affects the pavement design, which means how much asphalt, how much base, how much black base. It affects a lot of things. And y'all don't know that. And when I look, when the staff shows me this on a vicinity map, I'm in the business and I can't hardly follow it because it's such a small scale. So I'm not for doing anything till we know what we're doing and we've, we've done our due diligence or whatever you want to call it, and then let's do it. I'm fine with that, just like I was on the fence ordinance. It's just understand this thing before we do it. And that's all I have.
All right, kumbaya is over. I'm just kidding. So I do, I do have some concerns on the thoroughfare in particular Zone 7. So right now, the way that's kind of mapping out again is it's removed a lot of the ingress, egress from the, from the preserve and an additional location in, off of Featherline. I'm, I'm real, I'm, I'm good with the Mel Mason being a collector. I brought this up before. I had concerns with it being a minor arterial because of the width and the speed. And then, and then kind of funneling into Yow Ranch being a much smaller residential road and then trying to drop down to like 25 miles an hour. So I, I'm totally in agreement with that being a collector. But right now, you have Tremere, East Tremere and Chaparral. They're all two-lane roads. And I understand Chaparral will be done in five, nine, 15 years, somewhere in there, right? But the Tremeres, they, they, when you leave the preserve to go south, you're either gonna go to Featherline or East Tremere. If you make the connector through, once you acquire the private land to extend Mel Mason all the way to Tremere, that again is going into a two-lane road. So I would just ask, as you look further down, that Tremere and East Tremere are starting to be considered for widening as well because they're now going to be getting more traffic because you've removed a lot of these ingress and egress points from the preserve and interconnections in Yow. I don't know if you know, but Phase 1 of Yow, and Mr. Kegel, when you came out for the water pressure study, Phase 1 of Yow does not connect to the other phases, right? You have to leave Phase 1 to get to the other phase. You have to go to Featherline or Stagecoach to get around and get to the other phases. So it's just creating more traffic on those roads because you can't cut through the preserve or you can't cut through Yow to get to any of the Tremeres. You have to now either go Featherline, Tremere, East Tremere to go south. That, that's the only way to go. So I, I would just, if, as you go further down, just, just start considering those, especially with Turbo on Tremere. That's gonna be a lot of traffic as well. So just something to think about as you move forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Zager's. Hey, sir, I really asked you to break it down. I guess we didn't break it down enough. It was a lot of things that, that were said. And Mr. Kegel tried to clean it up, but nevertheless, it wasn't. And could you go over some of those things? Because I want people to understand, Mr., one of the persons said that it used to be that we paid them to do it and some of that stuff. And then I want you to talk on Zone 7. Anything that was said that we know it could be a misunderstanding? Can we clear that all up?
So we do still have city, city developer agreements. We have that, they're in our code. We actually cleaned it up a few years ago to make it easier to not go to council four or five times, but allows the process to go smoother. Where that comes into play is if you have a development coming in and we have one of these proposed, you know, arterials, collectors going through that development where that developer's responsible for putting that road in. You know, the city relies on developers to build our infrastructure. And so if this development's coming in and we show it to be a future five-lane road collector or arterial, but the traffic that is generated by the development or any of the area only justifies three lanes, the developer's responsible for what they, what they generate. So they would build that three lanes. The city would then, if we wanted to have it widened at that time, go into that developer's agreement to have that contractor widen it for us. So what, rather than building what they, they're responsible for, we wanted to build something future. If that was a city's decision at that time, we would pay the difference. So we would pay for the extra to widen that a little farther.
Okay, my next question is Zone 7, where Yow Ranch Phase 1 does not connect to the other faces and faces. And one of the thing that Mr. Seal said that, which is true from one, it goes on to Tremere. And something else he said about that. Could you break that down like?
What I remember is there was a proposed arterial on the north. And then there's another proposed arterial within 200 feet of itself. That's too many. You really need to focus, you know, your, your, your traffic to be more isolated and more in a regular grid-type pattern. If you have too many of these major roads, they're not gonna function as a major road. They're gonna be, you know, very, not a lot of traffic, very wide. And then you're gonna generate speeding and you're gonna have some other issues or safety issues. So we want to concentrate those arterials to, you know, regular type of, kind of a grid that's, that's staggered in a reasonable type of distance. So Zone 7 originally showed the arterial from Phase 1 Yow going straight across, but it really dead-end. It didn't really go anywhere. Phase 1 of Yow is a separate little section. So let's keep it as that separate little section. And then where Mel Mason, that is a major road. It connects all of Yow for the others two through eight right now. It connects all those people. And then with these newer developments, the one that was provided or approved, the zoning was approved prior, it aligns up. So yeah, it'll eventually go to Tremere. So now you'll have that east-west connection. So whatever development's going on along that, they can focus in on east-west connection. They get the Tremere, they can get the Featherline. Eventually, it'll go, you know, to the west and hopefully get the East Tremere. Tremere itself and that section, yes, it is narrow. But with future projects, you know, we're looking at sometime, we're gonna want to widen that. We're widening Featherline. We're gonna look at some point, want to whether, you know, widen East Tremere and Tremere, Chaparral. That, that's just the nature of how things go. We, we want to widen it when it needs to be widened.
And how much does this cost to serve it?
Right now, what we're doing today, it doesn't cost anything because we're looking at future lines and future developments that we can then work with those developers as those roads are getting built.
Not, not 17 million, they're in the kind of money. How much it costs us to do this?
So right now, like I say, it's, it's, it's planning and building for the future and it help us guide when we work with the developers.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Sure.
And that goes back to information just been thrown in the atmosphere. It's not true. Mrs. Messner, you came up because you want to add to it, this, this fact.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. I just wanted to add, just for a little bit of clarification, with regard to the connectivity between the Preserve at Thousand Oaks and Yow Ranch. We are proposing to, there are, there's a north-south and an east-west collector that's shown on the thoroughfare plan. The Preserve at Thousand Oaks, as you know, has an approved PUD and, as well as an approved preliminary plat. So their streets are going to be developed in accordance with the approved concept plan and preliminary plat. So that's not to say that there is no connectivity through the Preserve at Thousand Oaks. There is. There's, there's connectivity through the Preserve at Thousand Oaks from Chaparral to the north. There are two points of ingress, egress there. And then there's an additional one on East Tremere. There, there is no connectivity per the, per the approved concept plan from Preserve at Thousand Oaks to Yow Ranch. And that's due to constraints related to the floodplain that are through there. So, so those, those points of connectivity were not a part of the concept plan and, and it's due to the constraints regarding the floodplain.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Because that was one of the questions I had asked was connectivity. If it's gonna be neighborhoods, that's a community neighborhood, let's connect everything together. I even brought that up to Councilmember Alvarez. And that was one of the things that he brought up about that, the roadway. There is no way we could connect that floodplain was there. So thank you, that is awesome. And Mr. Kegel, do you have any comments? Okay, that's good.
Yes, ma'am, and just to answer your question about Mr. Seal's comment about Yow Ranch. He's correct. The nor, he was talking about north-south. City should never have allowed that. There should have been a connection there.
Right, where the first phase, Phase 1.
Yes, ma'am. That was many, many years ago. I don't believe anyone here had anything to do with that.
No, we didn't. Most of the stuff, we didn't. We just here to try to correct it. Oh, with that being said, Council.
I believe you need to close the public hearing.
I thought I closed it. I thank you. Did I? Public hearing closed. Public hearing closed. Thank you for that. Councilmember, but we were within, because we had staff speaking, and I didn't go to councilmembers yet. So that was just clarification in case somebody, I want to get Mr. Silk to come back up because I want to make sure he understood that. Because he brings some valid points, and they were answered. That's good. Okay, now, Councilmember Boyd. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to comment before I make this motion to approve. And again, I'll be remiss to address this just for the sake of, I mean, this is our community we're talking about. We've got to be cautious when we get in front of that lectern and we suggest to this community that the council is racist. You know, that is not what we are here for. That has nothing to do with city business at all, you know? And it's nothing that anyone should be comfortable with presenting or even hearing up here. And so in me addressing the comments that I heard earlier with the pause, having other folks speak, I just wanted to point that out. With that said, I did want to go ahead and make a motion to approve PH-25-008.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries 6 to 0. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Boyd? Councilmember Alvarez? All in favor? Mean adjourn.